Guess I'm supposed to do that. Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the work session for operator schools going through renewal. This is a, just a reminder, this is a closed session, so we won't be taking public comment at this time. However, there will be a special session for public testimony, which will take place immediately following the December 11 board meeting, going from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. A second opportunity for public feedback and comment will be at the KOMAR meeting in this room on December 18, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Additionally, members of the public can mail or email written comment to the board. Details about this can be found on the district website and at the end of the PowerPoint, which you will see presented tonight. This body, the board, will vote on all recommendations on January 8, 2019, at a public meeting starting at 5:00 p.m. Regular comment, public comment, will return on December 11 at the regularly scheduled board meeting. And with that, I'm going to ask Ms. Alvarez to come, and we will start our process for this evening.
My name is Angela Alvarez. I'm the Executive Director of the Office of New Initiatives. So this begins our operator work session. This is part of our renewal process, so we shared recommendations with this body in the public board meeting on November 13. The purpose of this meeting is for you to hear and ask questions of operators and stakeholders they bring up to the table with them. And then again, the board will vote on January 8. So this kind of reminds people of the process. Additionally, for schools with non-renewal enclosure recommendations, stakeholders from those communities can take advantage of the two meetings that Commissioner Chinia just referenced, December 11th and December 18th. And for those school communities, we'll be doing meetings at their school to talk about how they can engage with the board, which includes sending written testimony to the board via email or regular postal mail. So we have 10 schools that are up for renewal. This is a list of schools with the recommendations that we shared at the last board meeting. And so I want to make sure the schools have sufficient time. So each school will come up. For school communities that are in this room and other rooms, if you have documents that you want to give to the board as part of your presentation, you're going to give them to Christian Gant. Christian, can you raise your hand so people will see? So you're going to give them to him. He's the person that will pass it out to the board members. So that's the process, okay? All right, without further ado, I'm going to have Furman Templeton, please come up. Also, don't forget to turn on your mics. There's a button here. It'll turn green when your mic is on.
Good evening, Commissioner Chinia, other commissioners, Dr. Sandelisus, and other city school staff. My name is Rosalyn Lockwood, and I am the Executive Director for Furman Templeton Preparatory Academy. We first would like to thank Dr. Sandelisus for the three-year renewal recommendation, and also, we would like to thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak to you this evening and to share part of our story in four minutes. Two years ago, we sat in this seat going through renewal, our first renewal process. And during that time, we were able to share some celebrations, but we also left that particular meeting knowing that there was some work that still needed to be done. And we believe, within the two-year timeframe that we had to get that work done, that we had made great progress. We've made improvement. Within your handouts that you have this evening, you can see the first process that we went through, the SCR, in comparison to our second SCR process, where we were able to really change the ratings. So out of the 13 ratings in our first renewal process, we had a lot of yellows, a lot of reds, and academic area, and some greens. In the second SCR process, we had 12 greens out of the 13 areas and one developing. So we believe that within that two-year process, we have been able to make some gains and some improvement. We know that in order to make that, those gains and those improvements, that there's a lot of reasons that that can happen, but one of the main reasons is leadership. And we have great leadership at our school. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to our leader, Dr. Evelyn Perry, principal, and so that she's able to tell you the rest of our story.
Good evening, everyone. And I am also pleased to be here, and I'm here as a proud principal. One of the first things that I want you to look at is this sheet that's in your handbook. And this is data, and we all know, nothing tells a story like data. We're speaking about our school climate, and when we look at this data, you will see that it's suspension data from our school for the last two and a half years. If you look at 2016-27, you will see that we had 197 suspensions in that year. If you look at 2017-28, you will see we only had 71. And not only, but for us to go from 197 to 71, we really worked hard. We were strategic about it. We were intentional. And I want to share with you some of the things that we did in this area. We created a climate and culture team that consisted of an administrator, education associate, male mentor, two behavior management support personnel. We worked in two areas, supporting our students as well as supporting the staff. We had staff professional development on a monthly basis on classroom management strategies. We collected data on referrals and suspensions, and through this data, we determined what teachers needed, what supports they needed, and what supports the students needed. Our education associate's primary focus was on classroom. She goes into the classroom, looking, using the data, does classroom observations, and determines what the next steps are for those particular teachers. We also have the male mentor for grades four and five, who's assigned to male students. Once we look at the data, those students who continue to have behavior problems, this male mentor is on site every day, there all day long, and pulls students. But also, when students are having particular issues throughout the school day, he goes and has meetings with those students. We also have a mentoring program for girls in our schools. We have restorative practice that's become a mainstay in our building. Every morning, students have a restorative circle, and whenever we have a suspension, there's a restorative circle for the students who may be involved, for the student and teacher and the parent that may be involved. We also have PBIS, Positive Behavioral Intervention and Support. This is our school-wide focus for behavior management, and we work with our students on basic behavior expectations as well as core values. We have monthly celebrations recognizing good behavior and the adherence to the monthly core values. We also have monthly character education focus. We have lessons that students are taught. For example, each month, we have, this month, we have the core value of integrity, and every classroom should be teaching lessons about integrity. And we have the Student of the Month for the prior month, that we celebrate that student. We are also a trauma-informed school. We have been so for two years, and our students, teachers have received professional development in that particular area. We provide increased access to behavioral and mental health services, effective community collaboration, and an increased feeling of physical, social, and emotional safety among students, and positive and culturally responsive discipline policies and practices that increase school connectedness. This is through our trauma program. We also have a professional learning community. And this year, our professional learning community, our teachers are reading the book "Disrupting Poverty." This is our effort to ensure that our teachers understand our school community and the surrounding community. And we challenge them to look at their assumptions about how students in poverty achieve.
Thank you. I'm sorry, but thank you, and we will, we will really, you know, go through your packet. You've, you're giving us some great strategies that you've worked with, but I, I need to let folks know that we've, there's a problem with the timer, which is why you're not seeing it on the screen. But the, oh, now it's back, okay. But there is a four-minute timing for this portion, okay? So thank you very, very much. I'm sorry. I'll stop you in the middle there. Don't go away yet, in case there are. Any board members who may wish to ask specific questions?
I guess one question, in terms of your best practices, especially from a leadership side, is there some methodology or thought where the schools, charter schools, can share their best practices with each other? How does that work? If there's such a thing?
Well, I don't know if there's such a thing, but I have always thought that as charter schools, that we should have opportunities to meet and share our best practices, that we could visit each other's schools, and particularly, principals have opportunities to meet together. I know there were a couple of times when we had meetings with principals, and for me, it was an opportunity to hear what's going on in other schools, to talk about what the best practices are with each other. But we don't really have an opportunity to do that, but I think that would be a great way for principals to be informed about what's going on in other schools and to learn from each other.
Good evening. Dr. Perry, Ms. Lockwood, it is, good evening. Can you, you serve a community that, the 21217 zip code is the poorest zip code in our city currently. Can you speak more to the, the trauma? You were talking about the, the trauma reduction programs that you're focusing on. Can you speak a little bit more about that and how it is impacting the growth, particularly when I'm looking at suspension data? I'm seeing how your students that are in the special ed population, it is a very small number in comparison to a lot of schools throughout our district. So can you speak to that?
We have put in place a lot of supports for our students. We have three social workers in our building. We also have a mental health therapist in our building. We identify students using the data who need the most assistance. On a monthly basis, our mental health team meets with the administrator, the social workers, and all the people who are supporting these students to look at what's going on with each individual student, and we decide what the next steps would be for them. There is not one student in the building that, who is special education or who may be having any problems, that is not mentioned throughout that month. It's, the students are mentioned at the mental health meeting. There may be students, even in our climate and culture meeting, that we say are red flags. And the entire, I think the, all of the staff are always looking at what is going on with our students. One of the things that we realized when we became a trauma-informed school is that we had to look at how we were addressing the students. So one of the key pieces is developing relationships with the students as well as their parents. We also have students, we provide supports for them. We have students being addressed with outside services. Some of them have therapists who are from the outside, but they also meet with our mental health team so that we can all be on the same, I guess, on the same plate when it comes to serving these students. So the mental health piece is key with us, because we also know that our students come in with post-traumatic stress. Our students have seen a lot of violence. We've had students who have seen their own siblings killed in front of them. We have a store on the corner that we are very concerned about, where some of our students were in the store when the storekeeper pulled the gun, and because some older youth were in there. So they bring that to us. And so the restorative circles, the mental health teams, the therapists, the teachers, all of us working together to address the students' needs. We also have teachers and our social workers who do home visits to students. We also make certain that when our students come, and we have heard that there are some things that are going on in the home that we need to call Child Protective Services for, and we do that. But every student need is addressed in that building on an individual basis.
Commissioner Richardson?
So I'm looking at your, the report for your school, and so I do appreciate everything that you're sharing with us tonight. I just had a question about the climate surveys for staff and for students. It says that it's not effective. So like, what plans are in place to try to turn that, that portion of the survey around?
We have conversations with the teachers to find out what, why we were assessed in that way. With the teachers, I think sometimes when the survey is given, it may be given at a time, for example, when formal observations have just been done. And perhaps some teachers are not pleased with that, the assessment. We looked at the timeframe. We also look at, sometimes in our building, we find that some teachers are not a good fit, and we have to have those conversations. I'm a firm believer that you come to our building as a teacher, we support you in any way that, every way that we can. And even if you are put on a pick, we will give you the support you need. But there comes a time where we have to have that conversation, that you are not a good fit for Furman, you are not doing in your classroom what needs to be done to move our children academically. And sometimes, that impacts our school survey. With our students, I sometimes think that the questions are not clear to them. And as principal, I can't be a part of that school survey, but what we're doing is having students also tell us what is it they like about our school, what could we do better, and having those conversations with them as well.
Commissioner Frank?
Yeah, very quickly, thank you again for this. I want to make sure we have a complete record. I think it's the fourth page four from the beginning. It just doesn't finish. I want to make sure, if there's another page, if you could get it to Mr. Gant, and we can make sure we all have it.
So, so...
It just says effective in the vision end, and it doesn't...
So there's two-page fours, correct?
Right, the second page four.
And so the first one was from the first renewal process that we went through.
Right.
And then the second one where, so the first one has two developing, one effective and one effective, so two effectives. And then the second one has one developing and two effectives and a meets expectations. That's this current one.
So in the bottom, where it says, "School was rated highly effective in the vision end," that's just because you've taken a...
I think they just wanted us to see that.
Gotcha.
We wanted you to see that.
I didn't make sure we weren't missing a page.
The difference in the years.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Thank you very, very much.
Okay, thank you.
I just, I just want to make a clarification for the audience. I know you saw when we started, there were seven minutes up on the screen. I don't want people to think that we changed the rules. Our process is four minutes for the operators and for the presentation, and three minutes for the board to ask questions. And so our wonderful support group thought they would put the two together for us, but just, just a reminder, it's four minutes for presentation, and we're going to try to stick to the three for questioning. So thank you very, very much.
Good evening. Madam Chair, members of the Board of School Commissioners, Dr. Sandelisus, again, good evening. We're excited to be here this evening. First, I want to say my name is Elijah Etheridge. I'm the Executive Director. The button? Can you hear me now? I'm the Executive Director for Baltimore Teacher Network. We are the operators of Connections, a community-based art school, which is one of Baltimore City's longest-running art schools, charter schools in the city, serving 16 years. We are exceedingly proud and happy to have received a three-year condition, no, a three-year renewal, and we do have some exciting information that we want to share with you this evening that hopefully might encourage you to bump that three years to a five-year renewal. I'm joined this evening by Principal Brooks and one of our leadership members, Ms. Bangert, who has done just a wonderful job with our students in the reading area. So I'm going to turn it over quickly to Mr. Brooks to lead us through this.
Can you hear me? Good, good evening, Board of Commissioners. Dr. Sandelisus, I want to thank you again for the recommendation. I also want to thank you for taking that seven minutes down. I got nervous there for a second, but I appreciate it. I presented to you all in a pamphlet, a copy of our previous renewal from 2014 and 2015, and the one we just recently received. As you can see, we, we did make tremendous strides in, in our school. I'm happy with the improvements that we've made, but I'm not content. I recognize that we still have a lot of work to do, particularly around the area of delivering highly-effective instruction. It was an area that we, we looked at from our last renewal and took a targeted approach to addressing those issues, and I think we made gains. We, we have weakly PD'd that we focus on highly-effective instruction, so that teachers are equipped with the instructional toolkits that they need to be successful in the classroom. And I'm happy. I own every bit of the SCR report. I do wish we could get five years, just so it'll allow us to do some things that we want to do, particularly around trying to get funding, outside funding, to help support our arts program, which is the basis of our school. We, we are, every year, steadily increasing our enrollment. I remember when we started with about 125 kids, and we're now close to upwards of 550, and we still have people knocking at our door to come. We're a beautiful place. We, we are trying to cultivate students academically and artistically, and I just believe in what we're doing over in West Baltimore. We're on a shared campus, and I think we're in a beautiful place. I believe in my team of teachers. They are the ones to, to drive the building and do the work. I just need to know a little bit about everything, but it's the teachers that move the students. And I have one next to me, and I'm going to let her speak about our literacy initiative and what she's been able to do. So I have Ms. Wendy Bangert next to me, and I'll let her talk a little bit, and some of that information is included in there as well.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks, and thank you all for this opportunity to come to speak to you night, tonight, on behalf of the students, faculty, and staff and parents of Connections. In my almost five years of service at Connections, I've witnessed a culture shift, one, towards one that not only promotes literacy, but backs it up with strategies to develop and grow literacy amongst our students. Many students come to our schools reading one, two, sometimes even three or more years below grade level, as, as what is expected of them with our college and career readiness standards. We're charged with the task of meeting our students at their level and then growing them beyond those set expectations. To this end, we've instituted a daily stop, drop, and read time, where our students select what they want to read for 30 minutes each day. Student-led book clubs have grown out of this initiative, and our students have read collectively over a half million minutes since the spring of 2017. That's exciting to me, when many of our students profess to hate reading. Some of our students receive reading intervention services in addition to a full academic and artistic-filled day. As a result, these students have made great gains in their decoding ability and reading comprehension and finding, for the first time, joy in reading. Furthermore, we have piloted the Achieve 3000 program this year in an effort to reach even more students with data-driven instruction, whether it be for intervention, acceleration, or enrichment. Our testing culture has also shifted. We've taken the times to show our students how testing can benefit when used appropriately. Our students have developed a growth mindset and are an integral part of setting their own academic goals and monitoring that growth throughout the year. Our teachers have also shifted their mindset to include MAP data as one of the several data points that they use to inform their daily instruction in meeting our students' needs. As a result, 79%, 82%, and 88% of sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, respectively, showed growth in two or more areas of the 2017-18 MAP assessments.
I'm going to have to say thank you there. I wanted to hear those nice statistics. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good information. Any questions from the board? Thank you for the packet.
You're welcome.
You have a question?
Yes.
Commissioner McFadden?
Can you speak, it's not really a question, but I want some information. Can you speak on your arts programming and how, what types of arts programmings are you all offering at your school? And is there, is there any evidence of the success of that arts programming with your attendance, with student attendance?
That's an excellent question. Yes, there is evidence. I think our attendance rate hovers at around 93%. I think the biggest evidence is just the increase in our enrollment. Our students have the opportunity to engage in West African dance, modern dance, ballet, visual arts, vocal theater, West African drum, and we just added media arts. And with that, we just partnered with the Tupac Shakur Foundation and T. Rowe Price, and they just built us a brand-new media studio that we opened the other day. So I think the evidence is just in our enrollment. Students want to come. You look at our increase in our SWD population, we're close to 40%, and you just don't see that population of students gravitating to your STEM program, so they tend to gravitate to, towards the arts. And I know that, because I was a student with a disability. And so I think the evidence is in our enrollment. We're, we're able to, and I have, I have full confidence that we probably could be at around 700 kids if we wanted to, and we welcome it. We welcome, we've taken on the SWD population. We grew our life skills program by choice, and I think we have the model program in the city. So the evidence is in, in, in our enrollment. That's what I would say.
In addition to that, two years ago, we established music as one of our offerings, and for two years straight, the music department has traveled to Orlando, Florida, where they won the national competition in Disney, beating out all of the other states, two years in a row, and we intend to do that again this year. Also, last year, we sent our first ambassador to Africa. When he came back, the students were excited, are excited, the staff is excited, and we hope to send an entire delegation next year to Africa, and we're, we're planning that now, as we, you know, as we're meeting.
And we're beginning, Commissioner McFadden, to see our students matriculate from grade six through 12, where at one point in time, when I first started there as a phys ed teacher, we weren't seeing kids stay from grade six through 12. Many of them were leaving. And now we're seeing that number increase, where we're keeping about 75 to 80% of our eighth graders coming into ninth grade, and the evidence of that is behind me. Two of these young ladies have been with us, all of them have been with us since middle school, and they're juniors and sophomores respective, respectfully. And so the proof is just, is in our enrollment and what we're doing, honestly. We're just blessed right now, but we have work to do, by no means.
I do want to recognize our President of the Parent Association, Ms. Becker.
Yes, yes, and she holds me accountable.
If I could share, my daughter's also a 2018 graduate and currently majors in graphic design at the University of the Arts in Philadelphia.
Yes, yes. Excellent question. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I would like to hear from one of the, you said sophomore, freshman?
Junior, sophomore, well, juniors and sophomore in seventh grade.
Yes, could I ask you to hear each of you say something briefly about your feelings about the school?
Sure. I bribed her with a chicken box anyway.
But let me ask you something. They've all been there from what, just tell me, grade six?
They've been with me since, when I was a, yeah, I think I was still teaching phys ed when I had them in middle school, maybe, or just came out of freshman.
Okay, so can you guys hear me?
I can hear you.
I came to Connections when I was in seventh grade, actually, from a school that shut down. I was bullied in my other school, so I was kind of lonely, didn't know nothing about myself. But when I came to Connections, I came to a family, basically. They took me in, they let me know that I wasn't alone, they helped me because they were from business. know if my business is out there, but I had some type of suicidal thought. So it was kind of comforting to come there and they not push me out, they just helped me get through what I'm going through. And ever since I've been in dance, I've been, how can I say this? I've been put into a new type of culture because when I did, when I came to Connections, I didn't know anything about Africa, about myself. But when I'm in dance and I'm in history, I learned about myself, things that I should have been known. That's probably all I can say.
How many years have you, how many years have you been there?
I'm in 10th grade now, and I've been there since sixth.
Okay.
So, and my name is Ansenzia, and I came from Belmont Elementary in fifth grade, and I straight jumped in Connections. I don't want to leave. I want to stay there until, you know, I graduate high school. I want to stay in Connections. And I'm in theater, and I've been in there since sixth grade, I'm not changing my art. And I like theater because you can express yourself, we have plays, you know, so we can like have fun, like, and Connections is not a bully school. Like, everybody's friends there, even if you don't know each other, you just still call them brother or that's your sister, you know? And like Nakai was saying, I learned stuff about my ethnicity, how do you say it? Yeah, and where I came from, you know, originally, originally. And Connections is just, you know, bomb.
They, they, they're great kids. And, you know, I was talking to them on the ride over from North African School, and they're just, they're special, and as are all of the children. And we just, we just asked that the board and Dr. Santa Lysus consider just giving us two more extra years on that renewal, so I can, so we can get past the caring part, even though that's important. But it's now, I want to move the school past, okay, yes, we're faced with these obstacles, now what? And I can remember earlier this year, she's speaking about the individual student that was upset that she didn't have the tools that she needed or hadn't been exposed to the material that she needed or seen it when she got to college, and she was upset about that. And she's absolutely right. Students need to be challenged to rigorous instruction, and we need that, and that's where I want us to go.
Okay. Commissioner Hassan?
So I just wanted to say a note of personal thanks for supporting the student teachers at Morgan in your dance education program.
Thank you.
Very much appreciated.
Thank you. We need those partnerships.
Oh, there's, there was a request to hear from the other students.
Oh, Taysha. And DeShane. So, you want me to speak for you? Come on.
Good afternoon. My name is Taysha Williams. My experience at Connections is awesome. Connections offer good opportunities such as college courses, because me personally, I took classes over the summer, so I don't really have any classes. So next year, my principal offers me to take college classes at Coppin. I also dance with my best friend. Connections exposed me to just so much, and I really enjoy being there, like, I just love Connections, that's my school.
So, this, so I'm going to be, I, I, this is DeShane Thomas, he's a, he's a seventh grader. DeShane has been working around the clock with our reading specialists, and he's made tremendous gains over the last year. I believe, and I don't, and I don't want to put him out there, but it's remarkable what he's been able to do with his reading, and it's helping him in his classroom and getting more comfortable in the academic setting. So he's, he's confident when he's expressing himself, but he still has work to do. And I wanted him to come today, wanted to get him outside of his comfort zone and away from Fortnite. So, he's upset with me, but he, he's a great kid, but he's an example of the work that we're trying to do. And I'm blessed for my reading specialist and the work and the time and effort she's put in with him.
Okay. I think our student commissioner, did you want to? Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Frank?
Amazing school.
Thank you, sir.
Just, no, just really. But, I mean, you guys have so many great things to offer to other students around the city, and you guys have remarkable things, like a West African culture that you guys learn about. My stepsister goes there, that's why. But, no, it's really great. If you guys want the SGA president, you can even talk to me because I want to get you guys connected with the Associated Student Congress of Baltimore City. And so what they do is they're the citywide student council. And so you would be connected with statewide legislators, you'll be connected to the citywide schools, you'd be connected to Poli, Mervil, all the other schools around the city. And I think with the West African culture and the culture in general, just the vibe of, the aroma of your school, it's amazing. And I think if you can bring that to a citywide level, then everyone can come together and learn about West African culture, or join SGA, or, you know, just, you know, learn about things together. And I feel like that's what we really need the most with, is unity. So I really think, you know, give my email and we can talk further because it's amazing what you guys bring.
We're going to do it. Say no more. Thank you. Excellent job yourself, son. Thank you.
Commissioner Frank?
I know as a charter, your lottery is citywide. I'm just curious if you give us a sense of where your students live? And secondly, if you could describe to the extent it exists, sort of the rootedness that you have in the community in which you're located, are there connections between the school and the neighborhoods around the school itself?
Yeah, so right now, they're actually starting to come from all over the city. That wasn't always the case. And we do have a relationship with Gwinns Falls. A lot of students come from Gwinns Falls, a lot of schools come from Principal Manko School up at Liberty Elementary. So we definitely have that, that area down packed. I think we've been getting to go out and do a lot more articulations throughout the year so that students truly know who we are before they go through the choice process, so they're not stuck somewhere, that they have no interest in the programming, because what we tend to see happen is those students end up becoming behavior problems, not because they're bad kids, just because the programming doesn't fit for them. And so we're deeply rooted in the community, I've been, in the community. I've been at that school surface as a phys ed teacher, I started there in 2005. And here we are, and I've grown through leadership to sit in the seat, and I've taught students and families in that community since then. And so it's a strong ties to that community. I mean, those schools, that neighborhood is mine, and that's how I approach it. Even though we're on a shared campus, every one of those students belong to me as well and across the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you all for coming to show support for your school. I know, I know you're going to get connected in terms of being a part of the student association, so we'll see you again, but congratulations on the work you've been doing.
Can we all make sure we give a quiet prayer to five-year-old Amy this evening too, please? All right? And her family. Thank you, Dr. Santa Lysus. Thank you.
Our next presenters are Northwood Poll Community Academy. We have materials that are coming around?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. You can go ahead and get started, Dr. Gray.
Thank you, Dr. Chinia, CEO, Dr. Santa Lysus, board members all, commissioners all. We thank you for the opportunity to present again. And tonight, I'm going to stay present, I guess, for questions, and our friends will also present at our stead, in my stead. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners, and Dr. Santa Lysus. Today, we're here on behalf of NACA, Northwood Poll Community Academy, and what we have here is essentially an unprecedented non-renewal of a charter. Nowhere in the last at least five years, based on the data available on the Baltimore City Public Schools website, has a charter school been-
Could you speak a little louder? I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Okay, good, thank you.
Is this better? Has a charter school been shut down for not effective governance alone? In their last renewal, NACA received meets expectations for the audit 3.1, not effective for operator capacity 3.2, and effective in the SCR rating 3.3. And overall, it was rated not effective in governance. So based on the renewal packet that was sent, and there are a couple of things we wanted to discuss, this is not to diminish any of the words and allegations against NACA, but the Title I status, NACA is supposed to retain them as the non-federal entity based on the federal regulations. Nowhere in the IHB or IHBRA or the contract between the charter school and the city does it say that Baltimore City Public Schools is the non-federal entity. And NACA has extensive experience with the federal government relating to grants and keeping the originals. And, and they made every attempt possible to have the city come in, make copies for their pleasure, and to get the documents that they requested, but they did not have, did not want to turn over the originals because they were under the impression that they are supposed to keep them as they have every year since they've been Title I. And then there's also mention of a notice for concern for logging specialized transportation services. This was, I believe, one student in the school year of 2017, 2018, and the NACA employee responsible for entering that, that documentation into the system. They attempted to get training with the school system. There's many attempts to contact them. They eventually did get training, and now NACA is in full compliance with this and has been since the school system gave their employee the specialized training. There was also failure in multiple years to enter student application lottery information. NACA has not had a lottery in, I believe, four, five years.
At least, yeah.
So, and they do enter their student application information on the date set by the Baltimore City Public Schools. I believe it's usually around that date, most of the time before, that they do enter that information. And you guys will most likely be receiving documentation to back that up. And also the violation of FERPA. NACA sees all local, local count, local board members and national advisory board members when they are sending emails. No one, and also principals, no one that is on any of these emails is not authorized to have student information as this renewal claims. And finally, the last two are the FMLA, the alleged violation of FMLA. I use that term a little loosely because there has been no determination by any legal authority or any, there's been no case brought against NACA for violations of FMLA. This specific instance, it was just one instance where a principal was, there were problems related to the principal, she claimed she was on FMLA, and what NACA did was, they presented this to the board on a June 21st, 2017 meeting. The board agreed that the principal should not have their contract renewed, and NACA went ahead with the non-renewal and hired a new teacher for school year 2017, 2018. And also, there was one last thing about the violated district human capital requirements for not allowing a teacher to gather her personal belongings, and the chief of staff and their, the police had to get involved. What happened was that this teacher had been let go due to budgetary concerns and budgetary restraints, I should say. And she upended the classroom, tried to take personal belongings, damaged property, even caused a lock had to be replaced for $241. So in order to maintain the peaceful, peaceful school climate and so that no students would be disturbed, they requested the services of the school police to come in, escort, and supervise the removal of her personal belongings from the classroom. So again, this is unprecedented, that these allegations and just overall operator capacity as being rated not effective has not shut down or caused a charter school to not be renewed. So I want to be respectful of any time constraints, so if you have any questions, you will take it.
Thank you. Anika?
You may-
Commissioner Frank?
I'm sorry, you may have covered this in your, your testimony, but it was alleged that you violated FERPA by allowing people access to information that they should have not had access to, right? And what was your response to that?
I believe this was in, this was in response to any email, some email communications. The practice of NACA is to include all of their local members and their national advisory board on emails. Those people are all authorized to have that information. We could, we will provide you with a list of all the emails that we have that we will, that you can cross-reference.
You believe by copying those people, you have not violated FERPA? They are, you're saying they're, by virtue of their position, they have the right to be copied on information related to students' personal information?
I think what my, what my colleague is saying is that we've not seen any indication from anyone that people did receive information that they should not have received. We're happy to respond, of course, in writing, and we, we've just begun this investigation. But we're happy to respond in writing to any actual written submissions we have that, where there is alleged, but we can't respond to just a general allegation. You can't prove a negative, you can't prove nothing actually exists. If you, if there are emails where people think that folks were inappropriately included under FERPA, we would be happy to see those and then respond to those allegations based on that. But unfortunately, we're not in a position to be able to do that because I don't think we've been given those emails at this juncture that allegedly violated FERPA.
Well, the first answer was that you copied people on emails. Your second answer is you were not aware of any violations.
Well, no, I think, again, there is a practice of copying appropriate people on emails. I think we want to be forthright with the board on that subject, right? To the extent there is a violation that someone is alleging, we'd like to see the documentation of that allegation. We've not seen it to date.
Okay.
And to the extent that answer was confusing, of course, we apologize for that.
Okay.
Sir in the middle, what is your name?
Oh, hi, I'm Joe Gormley, I'm with the law firm of Gormley, Jericho Bowman. Because NACA takes the allegations and the non-renewal recommendation very, very seriously, we've been retained to start looking into these things and provide some written responses to the extent that is available, so the commissioners can have a full record before them when they consider matters prior to their vote. And we intend to be putting together written materials, which we're then going to follow up on. So if you have any particular questions which you'd like us to focus on when we're doing that, we want to make sure we're doing that, because NACA takes this very, very seriously and thinks the commissioners are entitled to a full and complete record.
What is your enrollment currently?
Right now, we're at one, well, we've got different documents from the city, as low as 161, as high as 164.
That's why I was, I was asking you, you all, because you could give a better and accurate-
We show 164 in our books, but the city is, is giving us financial, the finances are based on the 161, even though we show 164.
Thank you. And is there someone here tonight that can speak to the academic performance of the school?
Yes, sir, we can, we can speak to that. I think you might have documentation there.
Does this supply a document that shows a breakdown?
There are two pages. One shows park scores.
So it's just, it's park scores?
The other shows-
I would like to hear a little bit more on the, the day-to-day, what's happening instructionally, perhaps, I'm sorry, perhaps a more holistic picture.
Sure.
In addition to the, the park data?
Sure.
I would like to hear a little bit more about the academic performance.
Well, that person joins us at the podium. Can you clarify on your chart if, it says park grading for grades three through five? Is it third grade, is it fifth grade, or is it a conglomerate of all three of those grades? Okay, thank you.
So that's the over, this is the overall? This is the average?
This is the average.
Okay. So are there, so I'm curious to know the, how the academic program is impacting student growth and perhaps any professional development opportunities that you're providing to staff to continue to drive student growth and success?
Okay, good evening, everyone. So definitely, we realize that there are things that we need to improve in as a school in terms of academics. So last year was a year when we had some teachers who would say, we would have, we changed things and made it differently. So in terms of academics, we have been putting in place, looking at data-driven decision-making process, making sure that teachers are aware of the data, and they're using the data to drive instruction. drive instructions. So for park, let's say the already data, we're seeing growth because we're looking to see what are the areas of strength, what are the areas of weaknesses, and we're actually providing professional development around those areas. We're actually using the instructional, um, pretty much, some teachers are very new, that's what we have, most of our teachers are new. This year it's different. So we have that, um, data portion where we're looking at data, we're examining the trends, what are the weaknesses, and we're actually implementing strategies and professional development sessions to make sure that students are improving in those areas.
Commissioner Frank? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, didn't mean to cut you off, please, go ahead.
Sorry, may I?
Yes, please.
So my name is Luciani Hawkins. I am, uh, I'm currently teaching third grade, however, I am a reading specialist certified, and I am also working on my doctoral program at Johns Hopkins University. And I also teach at university level. So I have been working with students, um, and they're based on, now I'm here to say, to talk about the everyday, what's going on, what we see, the relationship, and how the learning is actually taking, uh, place in the classroom. So, um, students are really engaged and based on guide reading and DRA datas, we also know that, uh, they, when they are tested, uh, one-on-one, within this, this type of assessments, which are used in several districts around the country, they are testing above what is being shown on the park, for example, because it's not involving the computer aspect. So the, the information is, uh, I have seen students in third grade do, I, more than my students, that I, I used to teach in Springfield, Missouri, at an IB school, and was the highest, the most achieving school in my district. And I have students who write way better, who have spellings way better of my students over there. So it's necessary that, um, a little bit, uh, relationship, maybe, or maybe just a visit, just getting to see the kids, how they can, um, how they are applying the skills that they are learning. And we are also implementing, um, professional development. I am currently working in special literacy nights where we're going to have, uh, parents engaging in the community, because that's one of the most important parts of our school. And, uh, our parents are very happy with that because they are important to us. So academically, in summary, I see students performing above what we can see on these assessments, when, the park assessments, the computer, the computer-based assessments. And in the daily situations, students are engaged, participating, and they have presented growth.
And, um, also just to add that, um, one of our areas of strength is math at this stage because we were highly effective in mathematics, grade three through five, but we know that reading is one of the areas that we need to improve. So what we're doing, we're taking an integrated approach to, towards reading so that if students increase their reading skills and strategies, then they're better able to support the other subject areas. So just like the district's focus is on, um, the reading, we also focus on reading. We take that very, very seriously, just to make sure that students' role is, um, is obvious.
And differentiation is what guides differentiation and data-based information. So, uh, our students are not just receiving a general education, like, they have, uh, their, their needs are being addressed specifically, but group by group, which is very important for achievement.
Commissioner Frank and then Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you. I don't have this information at my fingertips. What is the allowed capacity for the school and what has been your enrollment over the last several years? And secondly, if you could speak to the school survey, staff rating, which was rated as not effective, so if you could answer those two questions, thanks.
Our capacity is 252 students, and we've been at capacity, sorry? Our capacity, is this okay? Is that better? Yes, sir, our capacity, um, is 252. And historically, over these, uh, we, we opened, uh, August 29th, 2005, there we were like 126 because we were K through two, but once we built out each year, once we reached our, uh, fifth grade, uh, K through five, thank you, that, that, we were at the 252, and we've been, we were at that 252 most of our existence. And, and the way, uh, enrollment, uh, works for charter schools initially, charter schools, we had to do everything, we had to advertise our, so it's kind of like the Beatles, we had to go like library to library, community, community, telling our stories, setting up our books, and giving our spiel. And that's how people said they want to take, take a chance on us or not. And we ended up being quite effective. And, and we got to the place where we, not only were we at 252, we had a waiting list year after year after year. The school system then changed the structure and it, and it moved from our, getting our enrollees and getting our students and parents and getting all of that data, information, contact, and then submitting it to you all. This new system came into place that says, um, as students enroll, you, we have to put them into this computer, um, you know, after, enter them online. This is Purnell, our, our, our key person there. And, uh, so we did that, and then we, and then we started running into something, Ms. Purnell says, parents are coming to us saying they're getting letters telling them not to come to NACA, even though they've enrolled in NACA, they want to be at NACA, and now they're confused. And so we're losing students. So, uh, uh, the, the way that all of this goes is, if you, as far as the lottery, if, if and when the people who are coming to us, because they have, they fill out an application and take it to Ms. Purnell. When we get to 253, at that point, you trigger a lottery. Every name in the pot, in the hat, has to be pulled out, and whoever's left, you, you, okay? If you don't get that 252, then there's no lottery. And, and, and so, uh, you know, after, after however many years of these kinds of mysterious, uh, things of people getting letters telling them not to come, uh, we, we, we were no longer at capacity. Also, there was one year, this is very important, we had a teacher who was first grade, she had to get her training, and she was great, she, she had to get training to become kindergarten, she did that. We sent all that documentation in, and then in the, in that new school year when she's going to teach kindergarten, parents are leaving us, and some of the parents came and they said, hey, we're getting letters telling us to go to this other school.
Just on that point, if you have copies of those letters, could you please-
Oh, I emailed it all in.
Okay, I haven't, I haven't seen that, so-
No, no, this is some years ago, sir, and, and when we emailed it in, the leadership, they just said, you know what? We did divert students from you, sorry, you lost the students, you lose the money, and now your reputation's damaged, sorry.
I think it's, it's certainly alarming to hear that you received, you may have submitted them in the past, I apologize if we have it, I'd love to see it, if not, do you still have copies? Just be something to submit, but thank you.
I'll send all, all of that.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And then the question about the, um, school effective, school effectiveness review, the survey, school survey staff rating of not effective, if you could speak to that.
So, one of the things, there are a number of factors that lead to, you know, staff satisfaction. Again, it had to, I was the, pretty, I was very new to last year and I had my, pretty much, my framework or my plan in terms of how things ought to be. So of course, there were discrepancies around the, the instructional practices, so when feedback was given, maybe it was not received in a way that would increase student learning. So as a result, um, it's possible that teachers, you know, felt a certain way or felt that, you know, they were doing, because one of the things that we, with the new leadership, they felt that maybe they were not supposed to be receiving the particular feedback that they were receiving, because the bottom line has to be, how do we move students, how do we, do we increase students' growth? So as a result, it was taken for different reasons. It could have been, you know, evaluation purposes because, again, we had some teachers who, the mission was somewhat different. As a result, feedback was taken in a different light, so that could be a possibility. What we have, what we have done pretty, I think, I believe, in feedback, trying to figure out what is working, how do we need to do things differently? So our teachers have constantly engaged in what's called reflective practice, so we provide explicit PDs around reflection, what is it to reflect inaction, unaction, and afteraction? So they're knowing the different reflective pieces, and we're having open conversations so that they're able to talk about, you know, what they're disgruntled about, and I do have, operate an open-door policy. So whenever those surveys are out for next year, I'm expecting growth, I'm expecting satisfaction because there are no surprises in terms of how is it we're doing, what are the areas of growth, why do we need to do things differently? And most importantly, I also believe in building teacher capacity, like leadership within the schools. So many of our teachers, they, they are actually active, active leaders, so we drive the work. It's just not about principal because I don't have an assistant principal, I cannot do it alone, so they see the gaps, where do we need to fill those gaps, and we're doing it as a collective body. So there should be no surprises in terms of surveys because everyone is responsible, each team is responsible for specific things.
And in fairness, I do want to note that the parent survey is highly effective, but thank you for that answer.
You're very welcome.
May I add, please?
So, and, and, and as, as it is known, based on research, every time that there's change, either with, uh, leadership, or a new program, or a new form of evaluation, there is always going to be this, uh, learning period, this adaptation period. So I believe that the information within this specific-
Can you turn your mic on, please? Thank you.
Oh, okay, sorry. So I'm saying that, uh, and the information I'm providing is based on, in, in research as well. Every time that we have, or most of the times, where a new leadership, either a new, uh, program, a new curriculum, and a new form of assessment, because the, the objective was to bring change and improvement. Therefore, uh, there is, there is this period of adaptation and learning from teachers as well. And sometimes, growth is uncomfortable.
Thank you, I'm good, thank you. Commissioner Richardson and then Commissioner Bondima.
Okay, thank you. I, um, want a little bit more clarity on your charts that you presented to us tonight. What's making up these numbers? Are they percent passing, scale scores, what, what's inside of these? You, you said, you said earlier they were percentages, and then what numbers are you comparing them to from the district?
Okay, thank you. So, we took the numbers-
And the raw numbers too, like what's underneath the, these percentages?
So these are taken from MSD's site, the annual report card, over the last, um, from, I believe it's 2014 onward, 2015 onward. And we averaged the, um, scores for third, fourth, and fifth grades for those who were approaching, meeting, or exceeding. We did the same thing for the city, um, in looking at those same grades. And we disaggregated by race, ethnicity, because, because NACA is exclusively African-American. And so those were the, the criteria by which we averaged all the scores, and then we just plotted them that way.
Commissioner Bondima.
I have two things that I want to mention. I was looking at the sheet that, that was handed out, this sheet right here. The one thing that, that, um, that concerns me is, I'm not, we, we just talked about the percentage. The percentage means nothing to me, unless you have raw numbers, uh, uh, I, I just don't understand what that means, just, if no detail, no narrative-
More than happy to add the raw numbers in a subsequent chart.
Yeah, that's critical, because percentages could be, uh, 50% of two.
Right.
You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
That, that, so it really doesn't mean, just for your information, we need more information, this is not enough right here. And, um, Dr. Gray, um, the one thing that I want to ask you, and we just talked about it, just bringing up, it was of great concern to me because before you mentioned, when you were here, in reference to letters, letters that you receive, or people receive letters telling, and you just talked about it, telling families not to enroll at the school or leave the school. I think, Dr., uh, no, excuse me, Commissioner Frank, he, um, he asked you for more evidence of that, and the only reason why I'm bringing it up again is because I heard you mentioned it several times before.
We, we've had the same problem at NACA too.
Right, I, I don't know which one, but-
No, we've had it at both schools where, where parents get communications telling them to go someplace else.
But it's easy to make that-
And we don't get copies of those communications.
But what I'm saying is, easy to make those statements, I'm an evident person, I mean, you-
Yes, ma'am.
You, you have to show, if you say those things are occurring-
Uh huh, yes, ma'am.
Please show evidence of what's occurring.
Yes, ma'am, we're going to give you all of those emails.
Yeah, one second.
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just telling you, when you say those things are occurring-
Yes, ma'am.
It means a whole lot when we see what you're saying.
Yes, ma'am.
Because, um, and you've heard me say this before, when you, when you, teaching, when you, as you're a teacher, you've been through this, when you're teaching, it means nothing to make statements, but you always have to show evidence.
Yes, ma'am.
And it, and when I hear this, it means absolutely zero to me.
Yes, ma'am.
Unless you show evidence of what you're talking about.
Yes, ma'am.
So when you say, uh, people are receiving letters and it's coming, I don't know anything about that until you show us evidence, because you could continue saying that, but where's the evidence that it occurred? And it means so much.
Yes, ma'am, no, we, we appreciate that, Dr. Bondima. Yes, ma'am.
Um, I'm, yeah, and I'm gonna sort of use that as, uh, the wrap-up. We started, and, and again, um, a couple of areas are positive. So in terms of the academ, the, um, the academic piece is developing, um, the climate was effective, the issue was around the governance piece, and I know you started in terms of sort of reading through some of the things that have been cited. So I think we will look forward to something in writing, um, with some more documentation in terms of how you want to refute those or counter those for us. And, uh, Dr. Gray, you had also mentioned at the last public comment about, uh, video, and so if you have that, I would also encourage you to be certain-
I can show it to you right now.
I don't want to show it now, but please, uh, submit that for us so that we can have everything that, all, all of the documentation that we need in terms of the board reviewing.
So that'll probably come on like a flash drive for you?
No problem, thank you. Make sure it gets to, uh, our board office. Thank you all.
Do the commissioners have a preferred method for receiving written testimony?
Uh, you, you want to check with, with Mr. Gans right here, he can get, he can give you that timeline, but-
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you all very much.
Ma'am, may I just add one little thing that I forgot, and I want to apologize? It's just that we are also, uh, starting a program of foreign language in our, in our school.
I'm gonna, I'm sorry, I'm gonna just ask, those are things that you can add in terms of the document, written documentation for us? Okay. And thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
But we have several more schools to go through.
All right.
Okay, thank you. Um, next up will be the Green School of Baltimore.
Greens, but this one is the Green School.
This is the Green School, not-
Good evening, and you often get started.
All right, good evening, members of the board. Dr. Sanjalisis, my name is Kate Prim, and I am the founding principal of the Green School of Baltimore, and I have brought the teachers of the Green School of Baltimore with me tonight and members of our school board, our board. So I want to thank you for making time to speak to us directly tonight. This is a particularly important opportunity for our school, because at the time that we submitted our renewal application, we were in the midst of working with a consultant to develop our plan for future math instruction, and we were not ready to fully speak to the details of that plan in our written application. We'd like to use this opportunity tonight to talk to you about that critically important work. When you look at our park scores, you will see that both the percent of students meeting and exceeding expectations and our mean scale scores far surpass those of the district. You will also see that there is a significant achievement gap between our black and our white students, particularly in math. We are all here tonight to say that we are aware of that fact and to clearly and as thoroughly as we can in four minutes, share our plan for how we intend to close that gap, through purposeful instructional strategies. We are also approaching this from a culturally responsive perspective, and given the time constraint this evening, I invite you to learn more about those considerations in the written submission we will make before the January meeting. For the past several years, we have been focusing on increasing our students' performance in math- For the past several years, we have been focusing on increasing our students' performance in mathematics. And these efforts have begun to pay off. Just this year, our school was recognized for improving our math sco- scores by eleven point two percent, the sixth-largest increase in the district. Despite these gains, however, we still see a significant gap in the scores. And we are determined to find ways of closing that gap. We are, we are employing a variety of strategies to do just this. Strategies that include making modifications to our curriculum, being creative with our teaching model, increasing the use of technology, creating a culture of excitement and enthusiasm around math, and engaging families in this math-rich environment. So a bit more about each strategy. Last year, we created a collaborative teaching model to support our students' math growth. The model provides for push-ins, I'm sorry, for pull-out support for younger students using the Do the Math Intervention Program, and push-in support for our older students. We've developed teaching partnerships that allow for more than one teacher to be in the room during math instruction several days a week. A practice that allows us to provide additional supports to students while keeping them close to grade-level standards. Strategy two, curriculum adjustments. Since our opening in 2006, we have used the Investigations in Number Data and Space Curriculum from Turk. While many of our students have met with success through this constructivist approach to math, we found that Turk alone did not allow us to reach all of our students. For several years, the teachers and I have been looking for the right supplement or alternative to Turk. This year, we are using a model that is a hybrid of both Turk and Engage New York. Engage supports the sense-making emphasis of Turk while also providing daily opportunities for fluency practice, for higher-order thinking through application problems, and for checks for understanding through exit tickets. All of which provide more data points to help us ensure that we are on track. We have been working closely with a math consultant to guide us in the work of developing the planning and pacing of this integrated model, and to provide professional development and ongoing coaching for our staff. Strategy three, infusing technology. We are using the Zern online math program, which is designed to allow students to work toward grade-level standards at their own pace. We're using it in both the classroom and at home. We have set up an account for each student, and we are running sessions to teach parents how to access and use these accounts. In addition, we are using more technology, including videos, online modeling tools, and interactive applications to teach, differentiate instruction, provide extensions, and increase communication with families. Lastly, strategy four, creating a culture of excitement and enthusiasm around math and engaging families. We have launched the work of helping all kids and all families see that there is no such thing as a math brain, or a math gift, that everyone has the ability to learn math. And to that end, we are pushing ourselves as teachers and learners of math, immersing ourselves and our students in a culture of being curious about and interested in numbers. We are creating a math-rich environment with numbers, math tools, and math questions everywhere. Next time we are up for renewal, we expect to stand before you to tell the story of how these efforts have paid off.
Thank you. I have one question. And I'm, I'm very happy that you've acknowledged the gap and have some strategies, um, in terms of trying to deal with that one. To what extent does your, um, does your teaching staff reflect the diversity of your students? And have, has that been any, any part of a, of a discussion around strategies?
Certainly. Our teaching staff does not fully reflect the diversity of our students. Um, our initial founding group was a group of teachers that worked together at Morale Park in southwest Baltimore. And we came together and founded the school out of the work that we started down there. And that group was a group of white teachers. We recognize that. Um, and one of the challenge, one of the great things about our school is that we don't have a lot of turnover. Uh, and this is also one of the challenges, we don't have a lot of opportunity, we have yet to have a lot of opportunity to, um, fill vacancies. Um, so the last time that we brought in new teachers was 2015. We brought in three. We brought in, um, an African-American teacher, a Hispanic teacher, and a white teacher. So that is a priority for us when openings do come. That is not something that has happened for us often. Uh, but we recognize very much that it's an area that needs to be addressed. And we look for additional ways of bringing people into our building, bringing our families, our parents, outside resources in so kids can see, um, people that look like them doing wonderful things.
I mean, just, just, I just, in our own city-school, uh, connection, is that the name of our newsletter? I just read it today, I'm sorry if I don't have the right title.
I read the piece today, too.
We're doing some work around, uh, because there is, uh, some data that is showing that students will perform better when they are, especially African-American students with, with teachers that look like them. And so we are actually, in, in terms of the whole system, taking a look at how we can recruit. But I'd also suggest that earlier, there was a discussion this evening about, uh, a local university that has pretty good role models that might be interested in, um, doing some things with you. So you may want to contact someplace like Morgan University, or Coppin.
Absolutely.
Uh, other questions, Commissioner Reed, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hassan.
I mean, something stuck out when you said it, uh, I was like, why did she say that? Uh, you said, "all kids and all families." Are you articulating there's some cultural concerns that you've had for a while, and you're still working on?
No, I'm artic-
And I guess my other question is, I guess this is a two-part question. And the other question is, I look at a lot of schools, I look at the pyramid. What percentage of your best students are minority students? You say you're doing really well.
Right.
But it sounds like there may be some kind of unfortunate pyramid where the best kids tend not to be the minority kids. Can you, can you educate me?
So, um, so remind me of your first, the first part of your question.
First part is, all kids, all families? What does that mean?
What it means, you know, I say it because math is that tricky holdout. We've done so much work, we've learned so much about mindsets, and how, um, you can, you have aptitudes, but you can build capacity for anything. Math is the place that we still hear people say, "I'm not a math person. I'm not good at this." It's okay, you don't have to learn that. You're good at other things, math just isn't your thing. So when I'm talking about all kids and all families, talking about the messages that, that, um, adults, when, I'm also talking about our teaching staff. I'm talking about the message that our culture sends, um, everyone about mathematics, as it's, it's, it's this special kind of thing that not everybody can be good at. And we are trying to dismantle that and say, mathematics can be joyous, and it is here for everyone, and everyone can have access and do well.
And what about the minority kids?
Um, I think that the performance on, on PARC is showing that there is a big difference between our, where our minority students are performing and our white students.
I mean to beat this dead horse, hypothetically. Say you have a class, your, your, your most accelerated kids. You have maybe fifty of them.
We have a hundred sixty-two students, we have one class per grade. We have children in every class of white children and black children, Hispanic children who are doing well, and who are struggling.
Okay, all right, that's, that's okay, I want it.
So, thank you, I, I appreciate the in-depth and very conscientious approach to the math curriculum. Um, wondering, to build off of Commissioner Chinnae's question, and, and yes, I'm, I'm sure you are all lovely humans, but we don't get these results without something going on in the sausage-making. Um, so what are you doing now with your staff about implicit bias training, um, looking at, at classroom observations, professional development, coaching, those types of things?
That's a great question. We are very much aware that we are a school that was started by white women. And we are aware that in that process, there are a lot of things that we didn't, um, that we didn't recognize. And so we are doing work internally and engaging with outside organizations to help us look at ra- race equity and inclusion. Um, so that we can really structurally look at our organization and make sure that we're removing barriers and providing access for everyone.
So I would, I would, again, building off Commissioner Chinnae's statement, I would offer, suggest, we've got some amazing people in the Teacher Education Professional Development, uh, school at Morgan who are working with culturally relevant pedagogies and helping push that into schools. So I strongly suggest you reach out.
Thank you. We have, um, this summer, we took a group to Teachers College in New York, um, and attended their institute, Rethinking Education for Diverse Schools. Um, because we are serious about this work. We are serious about looking at, um, at our school and making, and closing this gap. If we are a school that seeks to serve all of our children, we have to close this gap. We recognize that, and we fully embrace it. So, um, we are willing to look at everything.
Commissioner Lynn, and then Commissioner Richardson.
Good evening, over here.
Hi.
Um, I think what everyone is saying here is that maybe the conversation should be opened up to more diversify your, uh, staff. Um, I think, me, prime example, math is one of my hardest subjects. And I think that, you know, it could be even harder if you are learning from someone that doesn't look like you. And I, it's, it's just frank. And, um, one of my questions is that, how big is this gap? How big is the gap from Caucasian students from African-American students regarding the mathematics?
So, last year in mathematics, um, it was a fif- it, no, seventy-two percent. Yeah, so seventy-five percent of our white students were meeting and exceeding expectations, and three percent of our African-American students. And in literacy, it's forty-one point four percent.
Um, that, we obviously see that's a big gap.
Yes.
And we should, you know, do something about that. Um, have you guys been opening up the conversation about, you know, I know you guys have been going to New York and learning, but local universities, Morgan, Coppin, have you guys been looking at those?
We have been reaching out to Morgan to try to build relationships because I think it's important that we, um, provide opportu- we are close to Morgan. Um, would like to provide opportunities for Morgan students to come to our school, um, for, to be a pipeline. Um, we are also working with, um, when I talk about, it's sort of a tangent, but I'm talking, we, we look at, um, all of the work that we need to do. We are, um, holding a community forum also to find out what are the other barriers? Like, what, what is all the work that we need to do? We need to listen, we need to figure it out, and then develop a plan from there. And we are in the process of doing that work.
When you say community forum, what, what, what community are you specifically pointing to?
Uh, for the Green School community.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and, um, also, sorry. Um, what is the percentage of African-Americans versus Caucasian students within your school?
Uh, it's forty-six percent African-American, thirty-five percent-
Thank you.
White.
Hi, Kate. Um, I just, you spoke earlier about, um, lack of opportunity to quickly diversify your staff just because you have long-term employees, which is a good thing, right?
Right.
Um, have you thought about from a board level? I don't know what the, um, racial makeup of your board is, but I know when I served on a scho- charter school board, there were always opportunities for board members to be in the building volunteering and doing things. And so perhaps if you can't get the diversity on the staff level, maybe that's a, a way to kind of get some African-American professionals inside the building. But again, I don't know the racial mix of your board.
No, that's a, you know, that's a very good idea. Uh, we are in the process of expanding our board. And when we had our, uh, meeting with some of our candidates, we were talking about just those ideas. Yeah, thank you. Um, but I do want to say, um, in related to that, related to bringing people into the building, we are working very closely with our families. We have a very active family community, um, who run a ro- very robust slate of after-school clubs for our, um, students. And the idea is to bring what you love, bring what you're good at, bring your experiences into the school so our students have an opportunity to engage with everyone and learn from everyone.
Yeah, and I just wanted to add about the board. Um, so we also do have two, we have two relatively, or one new member and one we're extending an invitation to, um, who are both, uh, minority entrepreneurs, or in like the financial field. And I think that they could be really great assets to the school community. And they, and they've expressed an interest in, um, in, in being like, playing that role of like a mentor. So we're hoping to be able to fill that out.
Thank you again. Um, and it is good to see that you recognize what you need to work on and that you're being very active in terms of trying to come up with solutions. So, um, thank you, and, um, we look forward to seeing, uh, some good results.
Thank you, we look forward to sharing them.
Okay.
I just have one quick question. When you mentioned real quick that you went to New York-
Yes.
-to visit, um, Columbia in reference to researching your, um, professional development? Or, what was that, you went all the way to New York to do what?
We took a team of teachers to Teachers College at Columbia University to a summer institute that they had, a week-long institute that was entitled, um, rethinking, reimagining education, teaching, and learning in diverse schools.
Okay, the reason why I'm saying it, and I'm beating another dead dog, right? You, you have, again, you have, how many dogs do you beat?
A horse.
Beat a horse or a dog, or horse, something like that? I, I just don't understand why you would go all the way to New York when Morgan State University, um, have quite a few programs for, for professional development. School of Education, Urban Studies do a lot of work. And, um, in cultural, uh, responsive pedagogy and diversity in schools right here in Baltimore, which would be less expensive than traveling all the way to New York. Have you taken advantage at all of Morgan State University?
Not fully.
Okay, because the reason why I'm saying it, and, and please, I, I want to ask the questions now so I can move past this. And I, you know, you won't leave, and, and I haven't answered questions. When I, the, the people that you have representing here, you're all staff members at the school?
I'm a, we're board members.
Teachers, staff at the school. And I'm really concerned is, I, and, and of course, I have to ask the question. Again, I don't see too many African-Americans or people of color in your, in your group that's here. And I'm great, I have great concern when we have a, when you're in Baltimore City-
Right.
With predominantly, uh, African-American community. And I'm not seeing too many, um, African-Americans represented on your-
Right.
-your staff and, and in your school.
We are a small staff, we have ten staff members.
Okay, and of the ten staff-
And of the ten, we have two people of color on our staff.
People of color, okay.
And again, we are aware that that is an area for growth. And when we have a hiring opportunity, we will address it.
So you've been in existence how many years?
Thirteen.
And only have two? Okay.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks again.
Yeah, these are founding teachers. These are not teachers that we, uh, brought on in the, mostly in the last couple of years. These are teachers that were founders of the school. And we are all Baltimore City Public School teachers that founded the school.
Again, thank you for your hard work, and we're looking forward to seeing-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing some results, thanks a lot. Um, next, we're gonna move to independent school, local one, hi.
Sorry, I'm just, I was just getting clarification, okay? Thank you, oh, hello again.
Hello again.
You can go ahead and get started.
Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Dr. San Teliesis, it is again my pleasure to sit before you, uh, on behalf of independents. I am the executive director, as you know, of Baltimore Teacher Network, one of our schools, Independent School Local One. Uh, I'm joined this evening by, uh, to my right, uh, Michael Plummer, Deputy Director of School Administration for our organization. Uh, next to me is our lovely President of the Student Association, Ms. Jackson. And, uh, at the end, Dr. Howell. Seated behind us is our President of the Board, Matt Wernsendorfer, who is celebrating his twentieth year as member of our board and President of our board. Um, we are, yes, it is. Absolutely. Um, last year, we came before the board, we received a one-year, uh, conditional renewal. We are grateful for the opportunity to prove ourselves within this one-year period that we are worthy of receiving a three, and I can stretch it to say possibly five-year renewal for the school. Um, we were visited by Dr. San Teliesis last year. And she had, um, made some very interesting, profound discoveries uh, that we were not, uh, that we did not object to. Uh, she was, uh, spot-on in what she observed at the school, and there were many areas that we needed to correct. In our conditional renewal, uh, there were six areas that we had to address. Academic rigor, grades nine to twelve, chronic absenteeism and chronic retention, uh, cohort retention, pardon me, college and career readiness, supporting students with disabilities, cohort graduation rate, and attendance. I'm happy to report to you this evening that each of these areas, we have made significant gains. We have prepared a notebook, uh, for, for you that was submitted to Angela Alvarez. Uh, and I don't know if you've received that notebook yet, but, um, I think that you have. Um, we also have had a report by the, uh, School Works, which is a contract- which is a contracted outfit, to review the school. They've done a draft preliminary report, and they are amending that report, and we'll have that to you before the December meeting. So, right now, I'd like for you to hear from the President of the Student Association before hearing from the rest of the staff. Ms. Jackson.
Hello. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Yasma Jackson, and I am a senior at Independence Local One. I've been at Independence for a year now. And for me personally, I do think that school has improved since the last time we were here. And I do feel confident that the school will continue to improve if you allow us to remain open. One of my main cons- not concerns, one of my main comments that I had today was to let you guys know that from a grad- as a senior, I feel personally that the graduation rate will improve. Like, my class had, is one of the, I don't want to brag or anything, but we do have one of the best classes that had, in the school out of the previous graduating classes that had been, that had been before us. And for the lowerclassmen that are still going to be in Independence next year, hopefully, I feel that they should have the same experience and opportunity that I had at the school, that they should be able to continue to be educated here. Because the school, the teachers, I'm sorry. The teachers really care about the students. And everyone feels safe and connected. And we get, we get like special education than other schools. When it comes to having difficulties with the work or not understanding something, we all feel comfortable enough to ask questions, and our questions do get answered. And we improve as scholars as well as people. And I believe that, I believe that if you keep our school open, that we will continue to grow. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm Dr. Ron Howell. Last year, when we had this conditional, when we were granted the one-year conditional renewal, we did take that very seriously. We did a national search for a principal that could lead us to success within this, within this conditional renewal period. And we were very successful with onboarding someone who has, who has had twenty-two years of experience in Baltimore City Public Schools, who has a background in special education. And so, we are, we are sure that with the leadership of the principal, the leadership with Baltimore Teacher Network, the things that we have put in place to address each one of those concerns, academic rigor, attendance, cohort, all of those things that we have set milestones and we set benchmarks to meet those. And with the principal that we have, that has the experience to turn schools around, we are confident that when the report is given to you from School Works, that you will see a great improvement in the measures that we have put in place to move the bar to success in academic rigor and the other areas of concern.
Principal Ayana McLean had surgery today. So, she sends her apologies for not being able to be here.
Hope she'll be okay. Actually, the four-minute time is, but do you all want to, you have questions? You want to? I could use my question to allow you to say something if you'd like to.
Thank you. One of the six areas that we did work on and we took very seriously is academic rigor. And from an educator who's been in this field for twenty-nine years, it makes me really happy that some of the things that we did. We have an academic leader who brought in a new staff, who, a younger staff. They're energized, they're working with our students. They're trying to find the opportunities for these students to learn. We took our students to Sandy Cove Retreat. We met one-on-one with them. We met one-on-one with them, trying to build an educational path for them, a strategy to build on each day. And one of the other areas that was a struggle for us was attendance. But we're finding now, our attendance is hovering around ninety percent because the students want to come, they want to learn. They're being focused, and they're being supported by our staff. The BTN Board has spent and invested a lot of resources in coaching and finding opportunities for professional development for our staff. We have contracted with Buck Institute and Stenhouse Publishers to build partnerships with them to provide this professional development. One of the resources is right in our backyard, our sister school. You heard from Mr. Brooks. We're utilizing their strong academic folks in the school to help our staff to build each day. As you heard from this young lady, every day, and I'm in the school a lot throughout the week, and what I see, I see students who, who before may not have felt safe, who may not have wanted to come to school because they weren't being challenged. Now, they're being challenged. Now, we have set the bar high. The only way for our students to be successful in this school and any school in Baltimore City is to set the bar high, and to keep it high, and to push, and to keep pushing. And this organization takes that seriously. As you'll read from our documents that we submitted, we sat down, we built out a plan, and we're implementing this plan. And we're looking at it every day to see what we can do and how we can go forward.
Thank you. My other question is, how are you enjoying the new location?
It is marvelous. It is absolutely marvelous, the students, well, I'll let you guys be talking.
I love the new building. I can actually say we're in a building this year. Because every time I tell people what school I go to, they're like, aren't you guys in a trailer? I'm like, it's not a trailer.
Fabulous, isn't it?
Yes. It feels really, it feels really good. We have all new state-of-the-art equipment. We have new Chromebooks for our classes and the, yeah, it's a really good building.
Great. Go ahead.
Can you tell me your name again?
Me.
Yes.
Yasma Jackson.
Yasma, that's a pretty name.
Thank you.
So, how does that new building, how do you feel that that new building supports your learning and your growth overall as a student, you, and the rest of the student body also?
Well, with the new building, we have, we have new improved, like I said, the equipment is much better and the technology is updated. And in the past, we've had, you know, broken computers, and that has put delays in like projects and classwork. And we have Google Classroom now, so that's been much easier for the students turning their work, like even from home. Because I missed last Friday, I believe, I wasn't feeling well. But I missed Friday, and I was still able to turn my work in from home because of the new technology. And the building itself, it's in a better location, in my personal opinion. And the classrooms are much more, the windows are much bigger. And I know like little details like that might not matter, but just like having like a lot of lighting in the room can brighten up my day, basically. Because if it's like too dark in the room, I'm going to automatically feel sleepy and drowsy. And with the wide-open spaces, it makes it feel more like an open environment. I don't feel like closed in.
Go ahead.
I'm sure I should know this, but where is this new place?
It's in Hamden, thirteen hundred West Street.
Okay, yeah, yeah, thank you. I knew that, I did know that, thank you.
We're the smallest school, but Ace is at Independence, Robert Paul.
Yeah. Okay. All right, well, thank you so much. We, right now, officially, it's still saying pending, so we know that we're going to get all the reports and things. And we look forward to seeing what the recommendation will be. But it sounds like-
Can I just remind the public of where we are? And Angela can correct me if I'm wrong, but there was a report that the school provided for us that we got earlier this month. And so, the staff is still reviewing it to develop a recommendation for the Board. And so, at that point, at some point soon, we will make the recommendation public.
Right.
I'd like to add one other thing, separate from Independence. Just to let you know that Baltimore Teacher Network just held, we hold annually different forums for teachers citywide. We just held, was it last week? Last Monday. A courageous conversation that speaks to the issues that you were just addressing with the other group. We had Dr. Eddie Moore, who is the author of "A Guide to White Women Who Teach Black Boys." The forum was phenomenal. We had it at Johns Hopkins University at their auditorium, and it was outstanding. And the startling facts about this issue nationally is outrageous. But, and I'm happy to share that kind of information with you later.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
I think we have another one coming up on Tuesday?
Yeah, we have a forum on Tuesday with Dr. Ashley Griffith, our Teacher of the Year, Laquisha Hall, and a third teacher who unfortunately, skipping my name, and myself will be there to also talk about the issue. So, I think this is kind of a continual narrative within the city. And I think really speaks to the commitment across Baltimore to really try to get a handle on this issue and get to the root of it, of improving it. But thank you all for your leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you again. We are going to take a small break. Because we just need to help get all the other, the players into the room. So, we're going to take a five-minute break? Does that work? Okay, thank you.
It sure is. That is an open forum.
It is Tuesday. Let me just get all the complete information, and I'll announce it again. Okay, I think we're going to re-convene. I believe we've gotten folks in. Welcome. Did we get everyone who needed to get downstairs in now? Oh, no, have a few more people coming in? Okay. Okay, we're going to move on with KIP Harmony Academy.
Good evening. My name is Marsha Reeves, and I'm the Executive Director for KIP Baltimore, the operator of KIP Harmony Academy. I have with me tonight Natalia Walter Adamson, who is the principal of our school, specifically grades K through four. We have a two-school leader model, and is a founding principal. So, I'm excited to have her with us here this evening. So, thank you for having us, Madam Chairwoman and Dr. Santalisis, and good evening. As you may know, we've been operating two schools, now one, in the Park Heights community for sixteen years now. And our schools continue to perform academically. Specifically, our schools have been strong in math in this last renewal term with our, with receiving highly effective ratings in four of the six measures as you look at our students' Park results in math. We noted through our own assessments, even before receiving the data table, that our students weren't doing as well in English Language Arts as we would like to have seen, and weren't doing as well as they were doing in math. And so, even before, sort of leading into this renewal period, we've taken steps to increase our, the efficacy of our literacy program. In particular, this year, we have introduced a new English Language Arts curriculum, K through eight, that is offered, was developed through the KIP Foundation called the KIP Wheatley Curriculum. We, one of the important elements of this curriculum is it gives our students both reading and writing instruction daily, which is one of the, writing is one of the areas we found that students weren't doing as well on Park. In addition, we've introduced a partnership with Literacy Lab this year. So, we have three tutors in the building, and we have two reading interventionists now, both in our elementary grades, we have two, and in our grades five through eight. We have also this year launched a classroom library initiative where we are raising money to build out culturally relevant libraries within our classrooms that will allow our students to have grade-level appropriate and literacy-level appropriate reading for them, both in the classroom and to take home with them during independent reading. In addition, we continue to provide programs to support our fifteen-hundred students, K through eight, and our one-thousand alumni to and through college, as we really think about the whole child. So, we continue to operate our KIP Through College program, which we talked about in our application and specifically introduced a countdown to college summer program for rising seniors, rising juniors, excuse me, so between their junior and senior year, to help them get a head start on their college application process and support them through that process. And through our work, ninety percent of our alumni have graduated from high school, and seventy percent of our alumni matriculate to college. In addition, about twenty percent of those students who are six years plus out of high school have actually graduated from a two- or four-year institution. We also have introduced over this renewal period the Rails Clinic, which is a school-based health center, but it operates on an expanded model. We operate that in partnership with the Johns Hopkins Children's Center. And through that work, we've seen a forty-nine percent reduction in chronic absence among students with asthma, and a fifty percent reduction among students with ADHD. We're also increasing mental health supports this year through a partnership with Bayview, who works with Hopkins. So, I'll ask Ms. Adamson to take it from here.
So, we recognize that as one of our efforts to improve our Park results in ELA, we are focusing on our students with disabilities. We have added a Director of Special Education at our middle grades, which we've had at our elementary grades since we opened. And the purpose of this person is to provide weekly coaching to our special educators in the areas of planning, data analysis, and observation feedback. We've added that each grade level has a dedicated special education teacher, with some grade levels having two. We've adopted a new curriculum for our pull-out groups called Do the Math. We've also had additional professional development in Wilson Reading for our ELA teachers in the middle grades. And staff at our elementary and middle grades have gone to Orton Gillingham Training that has been implemented since August at the elementary grades, and will be starting next week in our middle grades because they just went last week. We also continue to see a strong culture and climate in our lower grades as well. And we do recognize that we've had challenges at our middle grades in terms of culture and climate, and it has been definitely related to a lot of changes in leadership. We are really confident in our future leadership for our middle school and our ability to replicate those successes on our elementary grades, and we're already seeing success. Last year, there was a fifty percent reduction in suspensions in grades K to four. This year, there was an additional thirty-five percent reduction in suspensions K to four, twenty-one percent reduction in grades five through eight, overall leaving us at thirty-two percent reduction. We had a goal of thirty percent reduction. We've continued to implement restorative practices, a consistent positive behavior system in our middle grades, as well as partnering with, we are in the process of initiating a conscious discipline pilot to do a study of that text, as well as implement some additional strategies, K through eight, and also internalize the social justice standards so that we can create a social-emotional curriculum and create a sociopolitical consciousness among our students and staff in order to support them as they develop and create a culture that reflects them. Lastly, we noted that our staff survey rating was not reflective of who we are. It was not effective. That is due to the fact that our staff did not complete that survey for Baltimore City. We survey our teachers two times per year through the KIP Foundation, and over ninety-five percent of our teachers complete that every year. And so, that is not reflective of us. At the time we received our ratings, that area was blank, so we were unable to present or provide anything that would show what our staff ratings would be. We do know through our school effectiveness review that we have strong staff support of our school due to an effective and talented people and vision and engagement, and we have a retention rate of over eighty percent for our staff year to year.
So, I know our time has expired. I had one more point I was going to make, but I can hold that for questions, or if you'll allow me, I can make my last point.
Any questions? Yeah, one question, and then I'll let you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hassan?
So, I would just like to say publicly that thank you on behalf of Morgan State for taking our student teachers at KIP. They're having a wonderful experience.
Terrific, thank you.
Commissioner McFadden?
Can you speak to your recruitment strategy? Two things, I want to ask two things. Can we see the teacher survey, that information that you all drafted, so that we could see how your teachers are at your school, how they feel, how they're proud? Can we get that?
Absolutely. We can make that information available.
Thank you. And then, your recruitment. How do you all recruit? Because you have a fairly large student population. So, would you say that it is your programming? Is it your overall school program? Do you have specific recruitment strategies that you have? I'd like to hear more about that.
Just a clarifying question. Are you speaking about recruiting students or staff?
Students.
Students.
The other one was for what we see as, you mentioned, the not effective in the school survey for the staff rating. So, you gave another survey to your teachers and your staff. I'd just like for the Board to have that information as well.
Sure.
But also, your recruitment for students.
Sure. Do you want to speak to that, Natalia?
Sure. Well, first, we've been in our community for over sixteen years. So, many of our students are siblings of older students. So, based on their experiences through the lottery process, they enter into our school. We have several families that have as students in our school since our middle school was founded, since our elementary school was founded. Additionally- Additionally, over the years, usually during the winter, we go, we've gone door-to-door to community events in order to help our parents just know that we're an educational option for them, so that they can make that decision for themselves. So we attend, for one, throughout this time, since one of our main entry points is kindergarten, we partner with local Head Starts, and we go to their transition days and events. One of my teachers goes in order to do that. We also have worked to advertise, just generally, in our community, at our local community centers, at community events in Park Heights, partnering with Park Heights Renaissance, and, like I said, the Head Starts in the area has given us greater access to our students in that way. I do think a lot of our recruitment is about word of mouth. Our children's experiences speak for what other people would like, and so they send their children to us. Things that we offer, one is a rigorous academic program. We are focused on making sure that our children's identity is reflected in our school, so our kids that are from Baltimore and that are predominantly black have the opportunity to reflect on theirself, their identity, and be able to feel welcome and safe in their school community. Also, be able to help them develop their socio-political consciousness in order to be effective participants in our city and our world, and I think our families appreciate that. I do think we also have a musical that's fairly robust, and I invite everybody to come. It's pretty intense. This year, we're doing two, which makes me nervous and excited. We also have robust after-school activities that our kids can engage in, as well as student ambassador programs. We are starting a student government for our grades three through four, and I think our kids have a deep pride in our school community based on what we do around our culture of college that then entices families and kids to come be a part of our school. And we are really large, 1,500 children, but when you walk through our halls, it doesn't feel that large. We make our big community feel small by creating a culture where kids feel safe. I know the name of all of the children in my school building because I think that that is important, and my teachers do that, and all of our teachers who aren't assigned to a particular grade level do adopt a grade level and get to know all the kids in all the classrooms. So for example, our music teacher, Mr. Golson, has adopted first grade. So he is in that hallway all the time, he's at every one of their pride meetings. So all of our teachers that aren't dedicated to their own homeroom, that's named after our college, are also dedicated to a grade level. My staff also stick around, so students come back to see those folks that have had a vested interest in them and supported them and cared about them. So I do think that then draws other students into our school.
Thank you. And can you, can you make sure that the Board Office gets the information for your performances, the musical performances? And I wish Mr. Brooks was still here for connections. I would, I'm going to ask him to do the same thing, because I don't think we always get the performance dates, different event dates that are happening at schools, and certainly I would love to be at the musical events, because I know that, I hear that students talk about that program a lot.
Yeah. It's definitely K to eight, which is really an awesome experience for our kids. We will, it's sold out, so we'll save you seats, but we will make sure we get you tickets and information.
All right. Seeing no one else, did you want to add your last thing, and then I'll say thank you?
That would be awesome. Yes, I mean, I just, as a last point, wanted to note that we understand that we were rated meets expectations from a financial perspective, and we've worked very hard to be fiscally responsible. We've built a reserve that has allowed us to sustain through reductions in the charter per pupil. But I wanted to point out to the Board that in creating our five-year projections, we needed to assume increased revenue through Kerwin in order for our program to be sustainable. And I think it's important that you understand that, and even with that, we had to make some assumptions about some staff cuts. So, you know, it's, while we appreciate the recommendation for a five-year renewal, we want to continue to operate in Baltimore for five years and many more beyond that. The reality is that if we want to be able to have extended-day programs like KIP in Baltimore City, we're going to have to work together to figure out how we do that effectively. Because at the current rate, we're going, as we continue to make cuts to our program, we're not going to be able to offer that extended time any longer, and it's going to cause us to have to really rethink what KIP is here in Baltimore. So I just wanted to make sure that I left that with you all as you consider the renewal recommendation of the staff.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next school is Green Street Academy. Just have to ask, is that the school uniform?
Sure is.
All right, nice. Go right ahead.
Okay, you got it. Good evening, Board of Commissioners. I'm Crystal Harden-Lindsey. I'm the Executive Director at Green Street Academy. I'm joined by Principal Gordon and our Assistant Principal Bryant Shonbacher today. We would just like to thank you for the recommendation of a five-year renewal. We do understand the intensity that goes into the process, as well as the SER. We're excited to sit before you tonight to share what we plan to do in the future. Over the past six years, we've grown our enrollment over 700 kids. We're excited about that because when you serve six through 12, sometimes we don't always hear the best statistics, but we're excited that we continue to grow our student population with over 1,000 applications each year. We have worked to become a school that embraces the green movement and the careers that they bring into our community, as well as become more vibrant in the community, building those partnerships with businesses so that our scholars can participate in internships. We also look at our SER and begin to make programmatic changes so that our scholars have the best academic program that we can offer at Green Street. And so we're excited about just being able to share those changes and being before you tonight. Mr. Gordon is going to share some of the changes that we've made.
So, good evening, everyone, and again, thank you again for the five-year recommendation. So a few things we were responding to, and specifically to our math scores, were in high school adding an approaches to algebra class that 75% of our students in high school are enrolled in, in addition to Algebra I, so they're having a double block of math. We strategically tried to place students that we saw based on I-ready scores that needed that support the most in that class. We also are focusing on small group instruction. So I think oftentimes, we focus a lot on the foundational skills, but then sort of lose those students that are really ready to, like, take off. So we focus on small group instruction so that our teachers can do both. We can focus on the students who need those foundational skills, and we can also focus on the students that are ready for that real big push in advance. In terms of our ELA curriculum, we saw a correlation with park scores in writing. So a lot of our scores that did fairly well on the reading part with threes and fours, but then scored ones and twos in writing, did not pass the park assessment. So we focused on writing across the curriculum on the ELA side, where all contents are focused on writing, specifically looking at building those, the stamina of our writers and building the capacity of our writers so they can focus in the content areas, specifically through humanities and science, as well as our elective blocks. We offer strategic reading courses as well, where students, again, were picked based on I-ready scores to take the strategic reading classes, excuse me. Those students are, actually have a reading specialist, as well as a special educator working with them in that classroom, so that's something that we're hoping to see some growth with based on I-ready this coming school year. We also offer speech, which in that case as well is more focused on writing as well, so writing of the speech is how we focus in that class. We have SAT prep. Now, we've seen a 200-point growth on average for our students who are enrolled in the SAT prep course. We have two sections of it currently. We offer in-house for credit for our students. In that class, we also have seen that students that are enrolled in that class have increased in park as well, and we believe that's based on their acquisition of vocabulary through that class specifically. The other big push we have, I think, is our hands-on learning. So Ms. Lindsay talked about our internship program. This past school year, we were able to provide 256 students with paid employment. Those students actually together earned $380,000, and these internships were in programs that were hands-on, linked to our CT track. So our healthcare track students were going to St. Agnes, they were going to Shock Trauma. In our CD, our construction design and management track, they're working for BGE. So those are some of the programmatic changes we've made.
How time is that?
Perfect timing.
Perfect. Any questions? Commissioner Frank?
It's a question that I actually intend to ask other charters, but how much of your budget comes from the per pupil allocation? How much do you raise outside of that?
So last year, we were able to raise $250,000 outside of the per pupil number. This year, we are projected to raise $275,000. We are working on our 10-year commensurate ceremony, so we are, our energy is right there now. So we're working towards that number. As a board, we're building to figure out what that looks like in the future. Our five-year projections look really strong, and so we want to make sure that we continue to grow that fundraising number.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner McFadden?
Thank you. Commissioner Chinna, can you speak to the professional development of your teaching staff that supports that small group instruction? And with the differentiated learning that's happening in your school, can you speak to the ways that you are providing opportunities to develop your teaching staff, your instructional staff?
So absolutely. We, first and foremost, we have an informal observation tool we use, which is similar to the formal observation tool, where our administrators are going into classrooms and picking up best practices, essentially looking at our teachers that are focused on that small group instruction. We're then taking those best practices. We've formed a professional development committee that is not just based in data, but also based on teachers. So it's actually run by teachers and led by teachers to identify things that the teachers feel like they do need. We've also identified some other schools where we've noticed, or we know former teachers in a lot of cases that we've worked with, that are very successful in small group instruction, especially in a secondary classroom. We also recruit it differently. So we've looked for people with elementary and middle school background to teach in middle school and high school, specifically high school, because a lot of times people say we can't do small group instruction. But in reality, if a first-grade teacher can do it with a bunch of six-year-olds, you can absolutely do it with a bunch of 17- and 16-year-olds. So that's been a real focus to really see it in action, because a lot of the pushback we got initially was, you know, I don't know how to do this with older kids. So that's really the focus of ours. In terms of small group instruction, it's figuring out ways to develop stations and centers essentially, so that our teachers know that the students that are not working with that teacher individually are getting actual support. One thing we do in that case, we've actually worked with an online program where the teachers are able to almost videotape themselves teaching a lesson, so students can break off on a laptop and work and have a teacher basically working with them while there's actually the same teachers working with people in real time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next presenters are from Roots and Branches School.
Good evening. My name is John Bergeren. I'm Vice President of the Roots and Branches Board of Directors, also a former parent of Roots and Branches. To my left is Ann Rossi, our Principal, and to her left is Elijah Etheridge, a face you'll have already become familiar with, quite familiar with this evening. He is our Executive Director. We opened Roots and Branches in Harlem Park in West Baltimore seven years ago to deliver a joyous learning experience for our children. The school provides an arts-integrated environment inspired by the Reginald Millia philosophy. We opened our doors implementing responsive classroom and restorative practices before it was cool. Three years ago, we came before you to fight for renewal. We lobbied hard to change our school's fate. We rallied families, staff, students, neighborhood allies, politicians. We were a young school up for our first renewal and still getting our footing. Board of Commissioners voted to provide us a conditional three-year renewal with a number of clearly defined actions. We partnered with Schoolworks to successfully execute a prioritization plan confirmed by Schoolworks' end-of-year report. Our School Effectiveness Review for the SER, you have both the 2015 and the 2018 pages on the top of that packet. They show dramatically different results this year over three years ago, whereas in 2015, we had a collection of not effective and developing ratings. We have shifted to only developing ratings in a sea of green. Here are some of our results.
So, as John said, we are in West Baltimore. We're a small school, and we're deeply entrenched in the community, and we're very proud of the growth we've made over the past years. Our community connections are important, and they include the Mission Continues and Harlem Park West. We have parents who regularly turn out for family dinners, student conferences, and interact with teachers before and after school, as well as volunteer in classrooms. Our park scores, while still not effective, show growth in math, with math, excuse me, being considered effective, and reading is developing, but the growth is beginning to show. Given the fact that only about 30% of our students arrive ready, this is based on KRA data, Ready to Learn, our internal reading data is something we're proud of, and it shows that 90% of our third graders met their goal of a year's growth, 100% of our fourth graders last year met their goal, and 80% of our fifth graders. We collaborated with Schoolworks, as John said, at the last renewal period, and we continue to implement the strategies that were developed with them to improve our teaching practices. This collaboration and change in oversight led to what was a positive outcome on the SER. Our children come from an uncertain world. Our school has provided them with stability and predictability. As a school which embraces responsive classroom, we focus on helping students develop responsible behavior, ethical decision-making, not just compliance. Our students have learned to self-advocate and to work through problems. As an arts-integrated school with a heavy focus on the sciences, we see our children learning core content through the arts and sciences and engaging in a rigorous and joyful learning experience. We feel strongly that choice should not be available only children who come from families with means, but that our children from desperate economic situations should continue to have options within their community. We have partnered, we have housed Parks and People Super Kids Camp the past two summers and are looking forward to having them return this year. The Mission Continues is working with their National Board to target West Baltimore and Roots and Branches for a national mass deployment in the summer of 2019. It would be really unfortunate to lose both of those things for the children and the families in West Baltimore.
One of the, one of the red flags in this year's non-renewal recommendation is the area of audit content and internal controls. When we sat down with the Office of New Initiatives to discuss the new renewal recommendation, we understood that the CFO's review raised some concerns. Specifically, there were notices of concern identified in our audit. Looking at our independent auditor's report, there are clearly no notices of concern. You'll see on page two of the auditor's report that our audit is clean with an unqualified opinion, demonstrating that our financial statements are in good order. Footnote eight does recognize a decline in cash flow, but indicates confidence in the viability of our school. Any doubt about that would have been expressed in the auditor's opinion. We've continued each year to make the difficult decisions when we look at our budget each year. We look to put money where it most benefits our children while still being good fiscal stewards. There also seems to possibly be a concern about our five-year rental repayment agreement. In addition to our annual rent of roughly $440,000, we've been paying back our first two years' rent amortized over the last five years. This repayment obligation will be fulfilled at the end of this school year, giving us an additional $40,000 a year for other operating expenses as we move forward. Eighteen months ago, Roots and Branches Board recognized that there were deficiencies in our infrastructure. Our school administration was simply too lean, and the Board's abilities to raise money and to increase enrollment was inadequate. So we began to focus on, we needed to focus on additional leadership and board development. We began to search for partners to help address these gaps, and this spring, we partnered with the Baltimore Teacher Network, bringing in an Executive Director onboard, Mr. Etheridge here, and fortifying fiscal management and recruitment capabilities, again, by partnering with BTN. We firmly believe that this move has stabilized our circumstances and will put us on more solid footing as Roots and Branches moves into the future. We firmly believe that this move has stabilized our circumstances and will put us on more solid footing as Roots and Branches moves into the future.
Commissioner Hassan?
Thank you for that information. I'm wondering, related to the school establishing growth goals that guide strategic planning, teaching, and adjusting your practices to meet student needs, in where you've received a non-effective rating. And in that context, when you talk about your students, who, 100% of your students who have achieved their one-year growth, is that one year from grade level proficiency to, so a third grader starts day one as day-one third grader and ends day-one fourth grader?
No, it's one-year growth over their baseline. So, it would be over their baseline. So, we did...
So, the goal for every child is one year regardless of how far...
At least one-year growth, yes.
Their deficit is. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Commissioner Frank?
Just to go back to the finances, I want to understand, you shared with us the audited financial statements year ended 2017?
16 and 17.
And so, 18 would be due when?
18 was not considered in the review.
Okay, well, can you share with us what 18 produced or anything in there that might cause us concern or support your view that the school's...
Another clean audit.
Clean audit?
Yeah.
No notes similar to the one in the back?
Correct. That's correct.
And then, could you speak a little bit to the various surveys, parents and teachers? We have some information, but if you could just, in your own words, what did you find from the surveys through the school effectiveness review?
Our parents have reported being content, happy, based on both survey and face-to-face feedback. I don't even know what the data says. Teacher survey, I think, also shows that they are content. Our teacher retention rate is very high. Our student retention rate is not good. That's the one tough area where we're struggling with. A mobility rate in West Baltimore that has really hammered us.
What is your capacity and what has the enrollment been over the last couple of years?
We were chartered to go to 260. At our highest, we were at about 210, I believe, and we're at 140 this year. I think part of what the decision-making has to be with our Executive Director and our Board is what's the right number for where our location is? We pride ourselves in being a small school where we know our community, our community knows us, there's a lot of comfort there. But, we're not really good at attracting folks from outside the community to stay with us for any length of time. It's a tough area, but it's a tough area where the kids deserve this alternative, this option. And so, I think our right number is going to be somewhere around 175, 180 to be operating effectively and consistently year over year.
There is, if I might add, there is also the consideration that the students that attend Roots and Branches are very comfortable in a small class-sized setting, in a small school environment. They thrive in that environment. To send some of these students to larger schools, I think you would begin to see a decline in their progress, and we certainly wouldn't want to have that happen.
And the question I asked before, what percent of your revenues are from the district and how much is raised outside the district?
It's basically 100% from the district right now.
Is there any plan to grow out external revenues or support?
And that's part of the partnership with BTN, so I'll let Mr. Etheridge speak to that one.
Well, we just came on about, just about eight months ago. And so, we are developing, as we speak, a plan, a strategic plan for growth and development in many different areas. The area of finances is one. A lot depends largely on what's going on in the community. If you're familiar with the Harlem Park community, which I'm sure you are, you know it has many issues that needs to be addressed. Right across the street from the school, there is abandoned housing, there's all sorts of issues and problems in the community. To have a school vacant in that community will only add to the blight in the community. So, for many, many, many reasons, we are striving and hoping to keep the school open, and it is a very important part of that community. So, we are back to the financial piece. We do have a development committee that is putting together plans for fundraising for the future. I don't have a specific number of what our targets would be, but we'll have that in a few weeks or months.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not good at multitasking, sorry about that. Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Can I just add that? We would invite you all to come and visit Roots and Branches.
We will.
It is a very small school, and that's what works for this population, that's what works for these kids. It's a small school, and we would invite you to come in and see exactly what worked. We have a terrific faculty who has a lot of longevity in the school, and they're there to do whatever it takes for these students to succeed. And so, please come down and visit us.
Yeah, dig deep, because part of what's going on has to do with mental health support, behavior support. It's a tough situation, so come see us.
We have scheduled to visit all the schools, so you will see some of us, absolutely. And thank you for the other materials and documentation that you've given us this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our next presenters will be from Monarch Academy. Whenever you're ready. We're ready.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you all this evening. My name is Kimberly Ampray Flowers. For the last year, I've been serving as the Chairperson for the Monarch Academy Board. And I am joined tonight by Nakia Nicholson, who's our Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Dwayne Arbogas, who's our Chief Educational for Innovation, Kelly Spino, who's the Chief of Organizational Learning, Kyra Hargrove, who is the Principal for Monarch Academy, and Jenny Lavelle, Director of Continuous Quality Improvement. I'd like to start tonight first by addressing one of the chief concerns raised in our school effectiveness review, and that is the delivery of special education services. As shown in Board One that's being set up now, even after over 40 FAP hearings, there were found to be zero violations, zero findings. In fact, Monarch has been so committed to ensuring special education students get the services they need and deserve, that 1.7 million additional dollars have been invested over the last two years to provide services over and above what has been allocated. Consequently, 100% of our students have been making progress on their IEP targets. And while there are still more improvements needed to be made, our students are experiencing growth in other areas as well. As referenced on Board Number Three, we share a quote that in part says that academic performance can't be, I'm sorry. Thank you. The success of our schools can't be measured only by proficiency on statewide tests and increases in graduation rates. We believe that these scores or park scores do not tell the whole story. And while our park scores do show deficiencies and absolute mastery, those scores don't tell the whole story. In fact, I refer you to Board Four, which shows our most recent I-Ready scores, which indicates significant growth in math and reading at each level. The strides we have made have been noteworthy, because much of the last year has been doing the heavy lifting needed and required to address the various needs of students and to create a culture and climate for learning. We've been focusing on the whole child and ensuring that not only are, is academic rigor, are we primed for academic rigor, but on all facets that contribute to learning. And not only are we committed to our students, we are committed to the school community. Our school building that we occupy was a $15 million investment, a purchase. We've also recently kicked off a housing initiative where we purchased 10 homes that we intend to renovate and sell below market to student families and to teachers. Finally, I will draw your attention to Board Number Seven, which is our Plan of Action. We have hired a Director of Quality and Improvement to oversee our record management and compliance. We will continue to invest beyond the $1.7 million already contributed to hire three reading specialists and three math specialists. We will continue to enlist volunteers to assist with I-Ready performance and literacy. And our Board will engage even deeper with monthly learning walks, monthly reports on academic performance. We are currently engaging in aggressive recruitment of Board members who have a background in pedagogy, culturally responsive teaching, research-based best practices, talent management, data analysis, education trends, and policy to support the execution of our strategic initiatives.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any questions? Commissioner Frank?
So, I have several, but I want to be sensitive to my colleagues and also the time. Let me just start with the question I asked earlier. How much of your revenue comes from the district? And how much is raised externally?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Arbogas. Okay. Okay, so the number is 15% beyond our per pupil allocation.
While this may not be directly related to any decision about the school's future, I am curious about the facility, which is phenomenal. I've visited it, and I think Monarch broke new ground in figuring out how to deliver a really terrific facility. Does Monarch own it outright, or is there debt on it, on the facility?
We have a debt on the building, so we have a $15 million debt.
I don't know if anyone heard you, just speak up a little bit.
Oh, I'm sorry. We own the building, but we're carrying the debt load on it.
And so, the debt service comes from the per pupil allocation and external funds, or is that...
No, it comes from the per pupil, and the external funds was really, were really for additional staffing. So, what's fascinating, Mr. Frank, is that our team is, one person in our team is really creative in new market tax credits and putting together loans. I think that was true in, with the housing. So, they've been, Mark Washington's been talking to us about buying housing for about five years, and we have a team that's continually looking for the right partner. We have a team who's looking for the right partnerships, and we were able to put that together, and that's how we got into the housing. But, I think, and I'm not probably the best person to speak about this, but the creative marketing to finance the school is really outstanding. And if you've been to the school, you realize what a phenomenal facility it is.
And what is the capacity and what's your enrollment been over the last years?
So, our enrollment has hovered between 985, and we opened, we actually opened over 1,000 students. We're at 986 right now.
And how is that geographically dispersed throughout the city or around the...
That's actually really fascinating, and if you look at this one board, you can see the dispersal of our students. And are you familiar with ArcGIS software? So, we've actually done a mapping, and the majority of our kids come from the poorest districts in the city, and we've actually mapped that out. So, there are three profiles of the majority of our students. One profile is, this is true, median family income, $18,300. The most prominent area is median income for families at about $43,000, and then, the second most prominent is median income of $23,900. So, when you look at the distribution, you'll see that the northeast quadrant is pretty heavy, then West Baltimore, and then, we have a pretty big, deep dip down into Cherry Hill and South Baltimore. So, and we'd love to show you the, what we're able to do with the ArcGIS mapping is we can actually look at the profile of our kids and their distribution by neighborhood.
I'll stop there, thanks.
Commissioner Hassan?
So, thank you for being here, and thank you for sharing the information. I just have a request, and I'm not speaking for all of us, but for myself. I would prefer that if your Board wants to share some of the information with us, and I understand the urgency, that they please use our Baltimore City Schools email versus our personal or our other work email. Thank you.
Sure. Commissioner Bardema?
Yes, to the principal, I mean, to the Board Chair, Ms. Pat Flowers. How are you? Could you give us an overview of your Board? Could you talk to us about your Board, the makeup of your Board, the profile of your Board?
Sure. So, there are nine of us. Three of us are former educators. One of us is an architect. We have an attorney. We have two attorneys, actually. We have a banker. We have, one of our school, one of our Board members is the President of our Parent Teacher Organization, and he's a Realtor. And we have two bankers, actually. And that's the makeup of our Board of the nine.
Okay, how long have you been the Chair of the Board?
About one year. This is the beginning of the second.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you for being here also. I want to talk a little bit about the academics, and so, if there's somebody on your team that can speak to that, because I see a lot of red hair, and I just want you guys to walk me through that.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. So, the data is flat, is data. We're owning the data. However, upon my appointment, some of the things that we've, you know, done, we looked at the data, and we've made some instructional shifts around it. What we did look at beyond just the park data was looking at our assessment, which is our I-Ready data, which is what you see depicted there, which is really one of our indicators as to the growth. And it's obviously a predictor on park. So, we noticed over the year that I've been in, over the last three years, that we have seen an increase in growth for our students. They aren't necessarily on grade level, but every one of the tiers in I-Ready have made growth. And that is something that we're very proud of. We have close to 50% of our students meeting target for it. We just finished our benchmark for this particular year, and it let us know that right now for reading, we have approximately 11% of our students that are on grade level. But, it's not a shock to us, and we know that this is something that, you know, this is where our work starts. And in math, we have about 4% of our students that are on grade level. Part of this is the influx of students that we receive. We receive about 200, we got in about 200, exactly 266 students from the neighboring areas that we referred to recently. That's 54 different schools in Baltimore City. And those students are coming in with a wide variety of ability levels. And one of the things that we pride ourselves in, and the reason why our benchmark comes in a little later than the district, is one, engage in the whole child, and one, getting the teachers to get to know those students that are in front of you, that they're more than just that number. And part of it is using a very unique strategy for engaging learners. We use a whole... We use a whole brain teaching strategy with those learners and our teachers are engaged with them and that is building that trust. It also is building the fact that, like I said, for the last year, I mean for this upcoming year, we taught them six parts of the brain. And that's every child from kindergarten to eighth grade is able to tell you those different six parts. You wouldn't suspect it based on the data that's in front of you. So we wanted to kind of destroy that narrative and allow our teachers to be able to say, you know what, these kids can learn. And we, we have a very engaging strategy that will allow us to then address the academic skills that they are not proficient in. So that's pretty much where we are.
Have you been around long enough to be able to look at or assess cohort data? Right? So kids that may have started with you and like what grades they're in now and, and can you speak a little bit about that?
I can speak to some of it. I do know that students that have been with us over the last three years have shown the most proficiency. I can defer to Arbogast and Mrs. Nicholson, who have been there longer than I have. This is just my beginning tenure I've started to look at and I'm really looking at the cohort that I've been. So this is, I was interim last year and this is my first official appointment.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nikia Nicholson and as Principal Hargrove was sharing, actually she and I both came in last year and that was in response to the board and our CEO making the decision that our data was very flat, that we did need to create some discourse in terms of our practices. And so we came in as a brand new team. We performed our universal screening with students and we determined obviously that our kids were tremendously behind. And so what we really tried to do was go back to the basics. And the back, the backing to the basic was really about using our approach, really learning and understanding what was happening inside of the classroom. And what we found is that we had a high number of teachers who came in new to us when we first introduced the transformational strategic plan at the beginning of the 2016, 17 year. There were some teachers who decided that that was not the approach that they wanted to go. We were very much in tune to being responsive to what the children needed and we were very deliberate in terms of our practice and what we were putting in place for our students. And so at the beginning of the 2017, 18 school year, once we performed our universal screening, once we really spoke to teachers, looked at the observational data, we began to put our plan in place. And as Principal Hargrove was speaking about, whole brain teaching was our primary engagement strategy for how we were going to engage and motivate students to become ignited for learning once again. We also spend a great portion of our time around professional development, really helping teachers to understand how to implement small groups inside of the classroom. We noticed that as we went up to our middle school levels, small groups really didn't happen. So we went back to the basics in terms of our professional development plan. We took a really deep dive around literacy as well as in mathematic literacy. We understood and we knew based on our data that kids, the majority of our children were two or more grade levels behind. And we piloted reading intervention programs for both our elementary students as well as our middle school students. And so we piloted that last year to see how students responded to that data. We also went back to our explicit instruction. That was something that was really missing when we did our initial assessment back in 16, 17. We really started to get content rich specific and providing those opportunities for our students. We really also pushed a lot of modeling for our students because that was something that was missing inside of the classroom. So in response to that, yes, the data, you know, lots of red, we own that. And we will be the first to say that we have a lot of work to do, but we do have a very committed new leadership staff. We are very focused instructionally on providing quality services to our children and we are very student centered as of last year. And so that is, you know, me being as transparent as I possibly can.
Just help me, how long has the school been around? I know this is in somewhere in the reading, but how long has the school been around?
So in this building, that would be the sixth year.
Six years?
Yes.
And how many principals in six years?
That would be three. Principal Hargrove would be the third.
Okay. So, and from the board standpoint, these decisions were made because you're responding to a previous renewal conversation with this board? And so you needed stronger leadership? Is that what I'm hearing?
Absolutely.
Okay. And how long, you can't tell me how long you're going to be there, right? But it's, you know, if you are renewed and given like the trend that we've seen, you know, a principal lasts about a couple of years in, in your, in your school, how confident can we be that this new leadership is going to be around?
Well, I, I'm committed as, as the board chair to be as, to be around as, as long as necessary to ensure that we achieve the academic rigor and the success that, that our children deserve. We have new leadership here. I can't speak for them, but I know that these ladies here are committed to, to giving our young people what they need. We have a plan in place. We actually had a retreat over the weekend that was planned even before this hearing to talk about how now that we have kind of steadied the ship, now that we have created that climate for, for learning, that now the focus is on academics. And not to say that the focus had not, I mean, we're a school, so the focus has always been on academics, but we needed to stabilize. We needed to create the environment for success. And so, you know, I'm committed to being here through the long haul. We are engaging in an aggressive recruitment plan for board members to assist with supporting the leadership at this new leadership that is at the school. So, you know, I don't know if that effectively answers your question, but we are, we are committed.
It's kind of a tough question to answer, so I, I'm, I'm very sensitive to that. It's just, I guess I want to point out that it feels like it's been a lot of change and, but I do, I feel like you do have some strong ladies sitting next to you. My last question and then I'm, then I'll be done. Just with regards to special education, what does that look like in your school? I know that the Children's Guild has a specialty. And so at what, at what point do you work with the Children's Guild as a third party operator? And then at what point is it just, do you, are you doing like the special education through the school system? Right.
Sure. So I, I can speak to the, the current makeup. We do have a, a new IEP chair. Given some of the, I guess the hiccups in the past, part of our recruitment strategy was looking for someone who is proficient in just compliance and ethics. So we were able to bring someone onto the team that has had a breadth of experience in that area. So she started this year. And the Children's Guild last year provided for us additional supports in terms of putting structures in place for process and for complacency and really helping that. I started with a brand new team last year. We all kind of came in, brand new chair and my entire staff of five were all first year sped teachers. So this year, and unfortunately we had a, a person that died that was on our staff as well. So with that, we had a number of, I guess, we had a number of things that we had to manage and the Children's Guild was able to help us with the, the structures and the things that needed to be in place because we weren't able to, you know, hire anyone just given the, the timing. So this year, I'm excited to say.
Is that in kind? When they, when you say they were able to come, is that in kind or are we paying for the Children's Guild support in that way?
It's in kind.
Okay.
It's in kind for sure. So this year I've started with a staff, a brand new IEP chair, and I have two self-contained teachers and four resource, four point five resource teachers that are with us as well. Yep.
And I would just like to add, going back to leadership, because leadership does matter. I just wanted to just be very clear. When we had this transition where myself, Principal Hargrove, and a few other leaders came on board, we had very deliberate conversations with staff. And at that time, staff made decisions whether or not they were going to be fully on board for how we were moving on behalf of children or whether they needed to make other decisions for their career path, which led into the change of leadership. So I just wanted to make that very clear, that, you know, we did give individuals option because that is, that was very important for us to continue fulfilling the vision that we committed ourselves to doing. And then the other piece is I am very committed. I was a city schools employee, an executive director working under Dr. Santa Lisa, who I have profound respect for. And so I understand it. And at no time would I become a part of an organization who would not want to serve the best interests of children. I just would not associate myself with that. And then the other piece is I know that this is mission work that goes far beyond books and I just want you to have full knowledge and comfort in knowing that you do have a leadership team who is committed to the children, to making sure that, you know, when it's not at, you know, we're not lowering the red, we are completely eliminating the red because that is what's best for children and we know that that's what they need in order to be contributing citizens.
I'd like to ask a couple of questions since you were on the, around the special education piece and I'm really not going to go on the compliance side, but can you talk a little bit about the model that you're using on the, in terms of the academic? Because along with your other areas of, of looking at achievement, there doesn't, there doesn't appear to be the kind of growth you want either for those students with IEP. So what is it? How, how are you using those teachers in that model? Especially those that aren't self-contained, because I understand self-contained piece.
Absolutely. So we're using them in both the push-in and pull-out model. It's a case management model that they're using as well. And the, the teachers have been provided with various curriculum. They have the, the ready curriculum that they're able to use and access. They also have access to the intervention programs that we have that they're able to use as well, the reading.
What, what intervention programs are those?
Sure. We have Read Well and Language Live are two reading intervention programs that we are using. In addition, they have access to, we said the ready curriculum, but also the I-Ready materials in order to do their small groups. So it, it just varies based on the students' goals and they pretty much have their schedules based on their, their goals and that's how they're receiving their services.
Okay. Yes. And I, I'd just also like to add into, in addition to that, what happens is our special educators, we have collaborative planning for all of our teachers. That's something that we addressed last school year where we build a master schedule that really supported collaboration. And so our special educators, not only do they collaboratively lesson plan, when they go in, they're very targeted in their approach and it is aligned to helping students achieve their IEP goals. So it's very specific to the needs of a particular child. So it's very unique in that piece. And then our general educators, like I said, in terms of the lesson planning piece, our special educators have opportunities not only to collaborate with them, but they also work together on creating individualized lessons or completing accommodations and modifications to a particular lesson plan that a teacher has developed.
Commissioner Frank?
I have two questions, but continuing with the leadership theme, I've had the privilege of working with Ms. Flowers, Amprey Flowers, in a previous life and I can attest to her leadership skills and you're lucky to have her. So that's a good, good thing.
Yes.
But I did want to ask, I have sort of the unfortunate experience of being involved in a charter-like school that found it difficult to ultimately hold a single person accountable because there were multiple entities that had a role in running the school. There were multiple entities that had a stake in the outcome. And when we, when I visited the school maybe a year ago, I sat down, it was with an entirely different group of people. And you explained to me the structure of the school. There was a Children's Guild and there were academic people that reported to the Children's Guild, then there was a principal who reported the district. And, and I asked the question then, who is ultimately accountable for the school's success? And I didn't get a clear answer and I wonder, from the experience that I have, it's, it's hard not to have a single person accountable that ultimately recognizes that he or she wakes up in the morning and all the things that you're promising us falls on his or her shoulders. So with a good team, so can you, if not now, maybe respond in writing with an org chart, explain how the organization works with the Children's Guild, their role, who they employ, what their board does, what your board does, who reports to whom, and who ultimately is responsible for the school?
Sure. Okay. Would you like to explain that?
It is a very intricate framework and I, I can rest assured that I probably dream about Monarch at night. I'm very passionate, I'm very committed to Baltimore. I'm a product of Baltimore City Public Schools.
And you're the principal?
I am the principal.
Okay. I thought you were introduced as the assistant. I, I, okay. You're the principal.
Yes, I, I am the principal. But I have a, an amazing team that I work with, with and ultimately as the Baltimore City Public Schools personnel, I am, I feel ultimately responsible, but I do have my things I need to report out to the board and to the, the charter organization.
And the academic staff reports to the Children's Guild and is, no?
The, sure, I do all of the evaluations myself along with the assistant principal and the Baltimore City personnel in terms of professional expectations, SLOs, and their evaluations. I have pretty much oversight of those items. And that's part of some of the things that I pride myself and my team is around effective instruction. I spent years with the instructional framework and that's something that I came in to do and we've had those very deliberate conversations, as she said, around instruction. We really believe in order to do this work, we have to have teachers that are dedicated and committed and held to the standards that Baltimore City has put into place and that's something that I've worked really hard to do.
Who holds the charter, actually?
The Children's Guild.
The Children's Guild.
The Children's Guild.
And but there's a separate Monarch Board or the Children's Guild is the board of Monarch School?
Now, so, so if you could imagine a two-pronged approach, so you have Baltimore City Schools and then you have the Children's Guild. Well, the way that the structure is organized is that Principal Hargrove, as well as her administrative team, including her assistant principal, are responsible for the overall evaluative program of the instructional model. Then you have your guild folks. That's where myself, as well as the head of school. Our head of school really assists the administrative team with climate. We know that climate for urban schools is the number one issue that, that principals and administration faces that kind of, you know, really provides this continuous challenge of issues that they're not able to productively get into classrooms and observe teaching practices as they need to.
Not to belabor this, but this is my last question on this point. So the, did you say head of schools?
Head of schools.
Is that a guild employee?
That's a guild employee.
And does that person report to you, Madam Principal?
That person reports to myself.
To yourself?
Yes.
That's confusing, but if it works for you. The next question I have is back to special education. I'm going to read something, if you could respond to it and how to reconcile what I'm going to read to Board Number Two. Office of Special Education Monitoring and Compliance visited the school and found to be, the school was found to be out of compliance in six to eight areas examined with zero compliance in three of those areas. Is that information you have been provided?
Yes.
So if you could respond to that and explain how that relates to the board to your right. Board Number Two.
I didn't have it on last time. In 2016, there was an audit of, in 2016, there was an audit of special education services. The audit occurred over three and a half days and immediately following the audit, the previous superintendent issued an order of rescension, rescension from the charter. We were puzzled by that because normally when you do an audit, the audit team then sits and works with the team so you can resolve the issues. And that didn't happen in 2016. When we finally had the audit team out and we could confer with them, we developed a plan of action and frankly, the plan of action was closed a couple of months later and they actually changed a lot of their findings once they saw the evidence that we could present. What you're seeing is the most recent audit in 2018 and there were samples of IEPs drawn. And when, with 10 IEPs, there was a box not checked around transition services and there was our speech and language therapist, who's actually itinerant from Baltimore City, had missed a deadline this summer. So, and that was in one out of the 10. So the report said that we were 100% non-compliant. We would actually challenge that. We would say that in fact, yes, there are, there were definitely some boxes not checked. There were some reevaluation dates missed, but for the most part, we've been very compliant. And our previous special ed coordinator actually was quite good at compliance. So we were a little taken aback and to be honest, we didn't think of a whole lot about it until the statement was made in front of this board that we were in. until the statement was made in front of this board that we were ineffective in special ed. Our data in special ed from a park perspective is not terrific, as you well know. Our data around, when we look at brigands and we look at individual growth, actually, our data looks pretty good, and the kids are making progress in special ed. But I think we want to challenge the auditor's report, and I think a conversation between the board and the actual OSAMIC and the auditor would show that we were very much in compliance. There were some areas that we have to correct, and in every corrective action, that it's been closed. So that would be our response to the special ed. So we actually think it's your responsibility, it's Baltimore City's responsibility to help us work through those issues, and I think you take that very, very seriously. But I also think it needs to be a collaborative effort. Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. I think that when we do contract within a charter, we enter into that relationship with the understanding that you actually know what you're doing, right? And so I just want to be clear about that, Commissioner Frank, that, because we provide, and I had to have this conversation with someone who's connected to you all today. We provide resources and information to our traditional schools in that way, right? Because those are the schools we are directly responsible for. Charter schools, you have, you put in an application, you said, "We can do this. This is our model, and this is our approach, and this is what we're going to do." So we're trusting that you can do that. Now, when we go and we do these reviews and we find that there are some things that are missing, we can highlight those things, but we really want you to come back to us and say, "Well, this is how we're going to rectify that." So it's...
Well, that's exactly what happens, though. So...
But you just said that it's our responsibility to fix that, and that's not...
And if I said it that way, I apologize. I think it needs to be a collaborative effort. Our special ed coordinator does, our special ed coordinator of the charters do participate in your trainings. But let me give an example. This is not the case in 2018, but it was the case in 2016. So there was a concern about how regular ed teachers were documenting goals on their lesson plans. Baltimore City said that that's a requirement. It's actually not a requirement from the federal law, which we know. Different lesson plans. So in the audit, they said that we were not adequately documenting. And we said, "Well, you know, you really haven't provided clarity around the documentation. Let me show, let us show you what we have." And the auditor said, "All right, we accept this." Yes, we showed them probably nine different formats for how goals were listed on the IEPs. So I think that's an example of the collaborative conversation. Do you know, it's like, tell us how you want it. And frankly, you generally do when you meet with your special ed coordinators. So as new regulations come along, that information is passed on to the special ed coordinators. So there is part of that collaboration, but I would have to say, in the 2016 audit, there was a lack of clarity and a lack of follow-through. This past audit, that was not the case.
Commissioner Hassan?
Thank you. I'm going to change gears just a little bit, although they may have, the answers may be intersecting with the special education questions. Monarch's chronic absentee rate is higher than the district average. Can you talk about why, what you've done to figure out the root causes, what you might be doing as interventions, what plans you have for the future and that?
Sure, thank you, Commissioner Hassan. We noted that as well. Part of what took place last year is that we added additional buses because that's one thing that we have in place to ensure that students are actually coming to school, is that we actually have buses that'll go out and pick them up. And this past year, with the weather, we noticed that that was where we really have the decline. We have, with our attendance monitor, we picked up that particular role and have our attendance monitor, one sending out letters, making phone calls. We also have, with the help of our support staff, they are there to help build those relationships to find out, you know, what's happening at home. We have our OMHC, which is our health clinicians, which also help us with that work because part of what we're finding in terms of the root causes that they're families that have trauma that we don't know until we notice, you know, they're out one or two days, and then we're like, okay, we have a team that we can just put immediately in place. Here's the support, here's what's happening, here are the clinicians that can work with you. I just need them to come to school and be there. So part of it is kind of like playing that triage, but then we actually now have a plan in place. But, and then we kind of changed the dynamic around getting to school, making sure that all of the parents are aware of the bus schedules, the times. We work with our bus company to make sure all of those are in sync because part of the causes were the buses, the routes, the parents thought they were at different times. There were a number of different things that were happening, but we were able to put a number of things in place. And then we also have incentives, of course, when the students are there. And those are a positive and continuous motivation for them to come to school, and they are rewarded as such.
So are you seeing preliminary results?
Yes, yes, we are, absolutely. We are seeing those results.
Commissioner, I'd just also like to add the jump because we all were very baffled when we saw that number. And upon investigation, we did connect with the district to see, you know, was our data correct? And we found out two things. One, the law changed last year, and so chronic attendance was defined differently in previous years, and that's why we saw a spike. So instead of kids being absent or more of 20 days, it dropped to 10 days or more. We know in urban communities such as ours that the, you know, our kids are going to be absent, you know, once a month. And as Principal Hargrove has shared, we have really tried to think very creative in terms of how do we engage students. Something that we have done starting last year that we've tried to improve upon is definitely including whole-brain teaching, and we have a component called Super Improvers. And that's where we are really trying to motivate kids to do better. Improvement is our goal, not, you know, being perfect. We allow kids to set goals, and that is reflective in our latest SCR. The other piece is that, what we determined is that when we asked for ONI more information as to our chronic attendance rate, the number that we had received in the data charts relative to the report that we pulled on the principal's dashboard was different. And so it was different probably by maybe six percentage points. And so what we learned was that the chronic attendance includes every child that stepped foot into the doors of Monarch Academy, which is a little bit unfair simply because those children, even if they stepped foot into Monarch one day, if they were not included in the enrollment audit, we weren't funded for those children, but we still were penalized as far as our chronic attendance rate. So the data is skewed in terms of what you have in front of you than the actual numbers of the students who are actually enrolled, and we were provided funding for them.
So, follow-up clarification, if I may. The change in the accounting, in the accounting of what qualifies as chronic absentee, that affected only charters?
No, that affected all schools.
So then, still the differentiation, then the over-representation of chronic absenteeism is a challenge that remains regardless of the definition?
Absolutely, and I just want to say, we noticed that the inclement weather that we faced last year, it definitely impacted our attendance rate adversely.
I have one other question, and that's around the, looking at the suspension rate, and especially students with disabilities. And it looked relatively high for several years. It went from, I'm reading the data chart, almost 26% in 2014, 36.5% in 2015, I mean, 14, 15, went up to 48. Yeah, in 2016, it dropped in 2017. But then this year, it looks like it's going higher again. Is it, can you talk a little bit about what's happening there? Because that's alarming, especially with children that need to be receiving special services.
Absolutely. So some of the students, we're finding that there are small buckets of students. They're kind of repeat offenders in some cases. And the, I don't have the exact report, I want to look at the numbers that you're referring to. But a number of those students are new, you know, to Monarch, and they're not necessarily students that have been with us. So the behaviors are one of the things that we do is really around, one, make sure they're aware of what our processes are, what our rules and our norms and our climate. And once we pretty much settle that climate down, those students are able to receive those services. I would like to pull up the, can you repeat the numbers for me one more time, just in terms of 17, 18 to...
I mean, and I'm doing this one because if a student has an IEP, my understanding is it's a little more to the process and even considering the suspension. So, I mean, it would, seems like it would create a lot of extra meetings. So for those, these kind of numbers just seem high. This is from the data charts, short-term suspensions. 2014 was 25.8%, 2015, 36.5%, 2016, 48.8%, 2017 was 19.3%, 2018 just 25.2%.
Yes, so we've had, in terms of the meetings that you're referring to, we are definitely, one, we have all of our interventions, we put in TA packets. We've looked at the FBAs and BIPs. We have really been following that, those processes for those students that do have disabilities within our community. That is something that we definitely follow to a T to ensure that those things are in place for them and following through with having those meetings to see if it is a reflection of their disability. And it is alarming to us, and part of it is just making sure that we have all of the supports in place that are needed for those students.
How are you using your focus around the whole student to try to counter, you know, the need for suspensions?
Absolutely. So we have our OMHC clinicians that are there. We also have our behavior team that is onsite. And those students, we have mentoring sessions that we have with our behavior coaches. We've also provided additional supports for those students, whether they're in our self-contained classes. We have additional TAs that we've added. We've also added those TAs to the classes where those students are, they also need additional support for them, and they aren't necessarily Baltimore City employees. They're the additional supports that we've added, who are trained in behavior modification. They're also trained in working with the teachers. So they come to all of our professional developments as well. So they're part of our instructional model, even though they aren't necessarily teachers. But we are putting in those supports in place for them as well.
And I'd just also like to provide a little bit of clarity because that's definitely something that I monitor and that I'm very interested in understanding. And just to give a little bit of context, since the year that we came in, what we saw was initially, when we had our staff, we had over 1,000 referrals in the first month of school. And that told us very significantly that our teachers needed more training around how do we engage students of color, and how do we redirect them and trying to understand their language. So that was something that we spent a heavy lift on last school year. In contrast, from last school year, the first month, we had less than 200 referrals. That data speaks very powerfully because our teachers are more stable in terms of how they are addressing misbehavior, how they are engaging students. And then the other thing that we worked very hard around is putting in restorative practices so that teachers understand, you know, how to organize cooldown areas, what type of effective language that they use when they are trying to redirect students. The other piece that I wanted to just highlight is that our suspensions typically occur for our new students. So the suspensions that you are speaking of this year are primarily from our students who we just inherited from other schools. And as you're aware, we have to take safety very, very seriously, and many of the behaviors are extreme that result in a suspension. So as an example, we had a third grader who started a fire. He was a new student, he went in the bathroom, he started a fire, he brought a lighter. And so that is typical behavior of something that he has seen somewhere, and he thought it was okay. But we have to make sure that safety is paramount. Another, an example was of a student who was pushing up on one of our teachers. We have to send a very clear message that that type of behavior will not be tolerated. We want to make sure that our teachers are safe, we want to make sure that other students feel safe. So I do want you to know that we do have a very thorough systematic approach when it involves redirecting students as a first approach. Every teacher has a cooldown area in their classroom, and that is the first step. Our goal is to keep children inside. For kids who elope or who cannot stay inside of the classroom, who can't access their curriculum at the time, we have behavior coaches that push in. Those students have push-in services where the behavior coach, three times a day, goes in to check on those kids to make sure that they are doing the right thing. Some of our kids use our student support centers for both positive and then for some negative behaviors that they are displaying. So we have a continuum of supportive services that we actively utilize and have utilized over the past year and a half that we will continue to do so. But what we notice is that the beginning of the year, for our new students, the behavior spikes. And then, you know, after winter break, they're more accustomed to the routines and rituals that we have at our school, and those kids begin to stabilize themselves with the help of our OMHC clinicians, who provide supportive help for our kids in addition to what the city offers.
I'm hearing you, but I just need to let you know that my concern is that these statistics are for students with disabilities. And so given the special circumstance that you have with a partner that is well-known in the area of special education, I would hope that you have some other kinds of strategies that this would not be an occurrence at this level. I mean, these numbers are higher than the percentage that you would even want your student population to be in terms of students with disabilities. So they're very high, and those are some important numbers around compliance that folks take a look at, both the state and federal. So I just, just flagging that one as an area that you may want to look at. Any other questions? I'm sorry, Commissioner Hassan and Commissioner Lynn.
So a follow-up question to that, and you may not have the data with you now, but if you could glean and see if you can find it. Presumably, there would be some additional infractions that fell under the classification of a manifest determination, that it was because of the special need. So if you could provide us with the data on the number of determination hearings that you had that resulted in a non-suspension because the behavior or the action is attributed to the special need, so that we can see sort of the filter you're using to determine what special need is provoking action or underlying. That'd be great.
Yes, we will.
Commissioner?
Going back to Vice Chair Chinier said regarding the status on special education. My first question is, what is the population of your school regarding students that receive special education?
Sure. So we have 115 students who will currently receive.
Okay. With the examples that you gave, along with 150-plus students that are receiving special education, the regarding of the rubbing up, or those instances that you have used as an example, were either of those with students with special education or receiving special needs?
I'd have to look at the data, to be honest with you. I don't have the dashboard in front of me, but I can get that too.
Okay.
There may be students that have a 504, possible, if that's included in that data as well.
Okay. I just want to know, that data is very, wow. But are you, is there, what is the actual problem that we're seeing these amount of suspensions within these schools with people that have disabilities? And is it because of the teachers not being properly trained? Or is it because of administration is not knowing of how to handle a certain situation regarding that? What is the actual problem, and how do we solve it? Because, you know, 29% is lower than what we've had in previous years, but it's still so high for 150-plus students. So what I'm trying to figure out is, what's the actual, are we having PD sessions with the special educators to talk about these things or how to deal with these types of things? Because this shouldn't be that high.
I agree. I agree with your sentiment. Part of it is, and I'd like to work with Ms. Hassan and present the commission around a disaggregation of the actual students, whether they're... a disaggregation of the, the actual students, whether they're repeat offenders or numbers, and where those actual incidents and things are occurring, to really be able to speak to it in, in detail. But we are doing both things. We are working with building capacity of our staff, that's really important. We have about 28 brand-new teachers that started with us, so part of those things just don't, it's not in the book, right? So part of it actually happens right there. So we do have ongoing PD that deals with just challenging behaviors, and they don't necessarily have to, and I don't want to make it something biased, that every child with a disability is a challenging behavior. We don't have that mindset at, at Monarch. So we are working with our, all of our teachers and our special educators on how to collaborate with one, knowing what are, what are the root causes, how are we addressing the whole child, if it has something to do with their inability to, to learn in the classroom, how am I differentiating instruction? We're providing all of those pieces, along with the behavior support pieces. And I am just doing some research on what is really the, the root cause, but from my standpoint and as a professional and as the principal, I am starting right there with giving them that training that they need to work with those students.
And I also like to, to add, you're very intelligent, and thank you for bringing up that question. So what we have is a tiered approach, and so there are some things that we use for all students, and then we have another bucket of students who we use the universal interventions and supports, and then we have a more targeted approach. So everyone obviously has access to the cooldown area. We do our PBS, PBIS. Students are heavily invested in how to improve in receiving a buck system. And then we have some students in our Tier Two who really need the support of behavior coaches. At our school, we have five behavior coaches, and their primary job is to help students build efficacy, help them with self-regulation, and then help them with social skill building. That's their primary focus. It's not anything like in-school suspension. We have very therapeutic settings where they have access to the behavior coaches, they go through a reflective portion of their day to help them understand what caused the behavior, why they got the outcome, and then giving them suggestions on how they can get a, a different result. Well, for some of our kids, just to put things in context, our GAINING report, we average about 260 students. Of those 260 kids, they are coming from 54 different feeder schools. And, and of the 54 different feeder schools, 31% are coming from progressively failing schools, and the behaviors of, of many of the children are extensive. And so what we are doing is trying to unlearn behaviors that these young people have come into the door with, and some of the behaviors that many of them come with are very aggressive behaviors. And so we have used a, a group approach to this. In addition to, you know, students having access to our behavior coaches and have small groups, they also have access to our clinicians. We have five additional clinicians in addition to the one that Baltimore City provides, and their primary role is to help students regulate. It also helps them with executive functioning, really helping them to understand how to make good decisions, and as Principal Hargrove said, it's about helping them to understand how their brain works. And, and so we spent a lot of work around that, around developing our teachers, around capacity, around cultural responsiveness, helping them to understand that language is real, that our kids come into the door with, and really helping to demystify what's going on inside of our child's head. And some of ti-- and sometimes those behaviors show out in aggressive ways, and other times they can redirect and self-regulate themselves. So I just wanted to provide some context, is that we are, we are really in tune to how our kids are coming into the door. We are trying to be very responsive, but also make sure that all of our kids are safe.
I, um, thank you for that. I also wanted to know that, so when you guys do our contact with Commissioner Hassan, you said that some are, it's because they're new, and then the principal said that sometimes they are repeat offenders. When you guys talk to Commissioner Hassan, please get down to the core of how much is it from new schools, and how much is it from people that have done it repeatedly, so that's when you can really touch on basis of what is actually the problem. My other question is that for the poster, whatever, this, this thing right here, for iReady-- Yeah, that. iReady academic growth, how much of the green and how much of the orange is going to the, I see that it's going up 15%, but how much of it from, specifically from the green, is going directly to the blue? And what strategies or how have you guys been touching bases to get to the orange or one below level for iReady?
Sure. So I can speak to the number, the strategies that we've been using. So part of the strategies that we've been using, of course, is differentiated, but a small group intervention time has been really major for us, and we also had an intervention block that we built into our, our schedule that we've been able to use, and we can attribute that particular strategy to, to the growth that you're seeing there. Working with the teachers on how to have small group instruction and what that actually looks like, looking at it from a blended learning model, making use of all of our technology that we have in the classroom, and we can contribute part of that growth to, to that.
Put you off, but--
Sure.
--how much of the, how long have the small group has been implemented within Monarch? Like, how long has it been implemented? I'm sorry.
So we just started last year with them, so this was a part of kind of our, our pre-planning, and as we were looking at some of the data, myself and Ms. Nicholson and the team, those are some things that we found would be advantageous to us to put in place, where they weren't in place in a consistent model. This year, we have picked up with it full speed ahead, this go-round, and working with them, and working with them, and planning it, and not only planning it, but the implementation of it. We've done our learning walks with my ILT team, with my admin team, and really building the capacity from the team leads to help lead this work, because I'm just not the only one that's able to do it, but we've spent a lot of time with that.
I also wanted to point out, Principal Hargrove, for our students who did make improvements in terms of on-grade level and from our iReady data, from, in reading and mathematics, what we did this year was, we developed a gifted and learning program for those students to really push them to a different level. That was something, a curriculum shift that we implemented this school year, because our goal is to continue to push our students around improvement in both math, matics, as, as well as literacy.
Thanks. We have one last question, that's Commissioner Frank?
It is, and thank you for hanging in there with us. This is really more of a question around clarity that maybe Ms. Alvarez can help us with. I am confused about the period that covers the concerns about special education. We, we've heard a lot about the 2016 issues. You submitted a very lengthy response to that. You were highly critical of the staff in dealing with those issues. We now have some issues in 2018, there was a 0% compliance. So can we, maybe not tonight, but could you help the board understand, are the 2016 issues part of the review? If they're not, what is, what is part of the review? And maybe, again, not tonight, how does that relate to Board Number Two, which frankly, I don't understand what that means? So you, if it's, if it's okay, should answer tonight, or I was going to give you the option to answer later, but thank you.
Just really clear, quickly so we're clear. So the 2016 results came in the end of that contract term from the prior term, so that's not a consideration for this process. This process is looking at the current contract term, so the, the most recent results, and is looking at not just the site review, but like some of the data that we talked about, all of those pieces. So all the things that are like in the rubric, that are detailed in the rubric.
This areas found out of compliance, that was part of the current review.
Right, as well as looking at like differences in data, like we talked about chronic attendance, suspensions, all of those are part of that.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Just a reminder, one more time, that we, there will be time for public testimony after the December 11th board meeting from 7:00 to 9:00, and then a second time during the, at the COMAR meeting, which will be on December the 18th from 6:00 to 8:00. And if you have additional written materials or, or that you'd like to send, please send those to the board office. Board members will be reviewing all of this, and the final decisions will be, vote on the recommendations will be made on January 8th, 2019. Thank everyone for your attendance this evening, and have a safe travels home. Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you both very much. Very nice to meet you.
Likewise.
We are--